Good evening and welcome to the Board of Select meeting for the Town of Holliston. It is March 2nd at 6:05 PM. And unlike most meetings, we have a special guest here that's going to a professional to talk to us about different ways that we can go about hiring a new town administrator, as our town administrator will be retiring July 12th. So I would like to invite John Petron to come up and so he can speak with us. And if you can introduce your company and a little bit about your company first and then a little bit about you.
Sure. Hand out some materials.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening.
Absolutely.
So again, my name is John Petron. I'm with the firm Community Paradigm Associates. And we do work with communities in the Commonwealth and outside relative to tonight will be relative to executive searches for town administrator, town manager positions. So if you want to explain our company a little bit and go through.
Absolutely.
So the company is, principal is Bernie Lynch. Bernie has 35 years prior to in municipal government. He retired as the city manager, City of Lowell, for eight years. Prior to that, he was the town manager for the Town of Chumsford. I assist, I'm a senior associate with the firm, and I have 40 years in municipal government.
Wow.
So I retired a year ago as town administrator in Burlington. I have served as town manager in Ashland, assistant superintendent of schools for the City of Marlborough, town administrator for the Town of Harvin.
Wow.
So a couple of communities in my career.
What a background.
So yeah, very, very, very interesting and going both ways with schools and general government in that sense. And so I retired a year ago and joined the firm. And the third member of our firm that would be, if you decide to go with our firm, would be Sharon Flaherty. Sharon is, her background is communications. So she's a, you know, a great third in the group, whereas Bernie and I have the municipal experience and we know the folks in the business. Sharon is a great communicator. She has a couple of master's degrees in business administration, communications, and she was a newspaper reporter and editor and worked for the private sector in the area of communications.
Wow.
So she is great with the writing, with the interviewing when it comes to especially like background checks and so on. So she's, you know, is, you know, part of the core group that would be working with all of you in your search. So Community Paradigm, we have, you know, the extensive municipal experience as we've just talked about. We have an extensive and current network. So whereas I retired only a year ago, I've been very involved in municipal government. I'm a former president of the Managers Association and president of the Massachusetts Municipal Association.
Wow.
So I've worked with a lot of folks over the years, and Bernie has been very involved as well. In the Managers Association, I think between us, we know, if not all, most of the managers in the state, Jeff and I were just catching up, you know, a little bit earlier. So we have, we do a lot of activity in the recruiting area. So we've done many of the communities in the state in the last year. So we've conducted close to 20 searches in the last year alone. I've been involved in a dozen of those in the last year doing searches within the state. So with that, we also have our website gets 5,000 hits a month.
Wow.
So, you know, as to people know to go to our website. And we're always talking to candidates, people who want to be involved or people who are looking to become managers. I just had a meeting the end of last week with someone who's been in the business for many years as a department head, looking to, you know, to become a manager, having that discussion as to what that looks like moving forward. We're both involved in the Suffolk program. If you've seen in the literature that comes out from MMA, the MMA sponsored Suffolk Certificate Program. So I'm the coordinator of that program. Bernie has been a coordinator and he's been teaching in that program for five or six years. So we're working with every year 50 to 60 folks who are registered in that certificate program, plus the finance program that just started last year. So we're beginning, I'll be teaching this Friday for the third finance seminar that's going to be occurring. And that's another 30 students involved with that. So we're working with a lot of folks in the business.
Excuse me, John, do you have one more copy of this?
I do not.
Oh, okay. We'll share, we'll get myriad copies at some point.
I knew I'd heard your name in multiple circles, and it's the Suffolk Certificate Program that I think most recently I'd heard about, yeah.
Okay. Yes, so I serve as the certificate coordinator. I work for Suffolk University in that role, and I am the go-between between MMA, Suffolk, and the students within the program. So I'm working with the students, those who would like to move on to get their masters in public administration from Suffolk, so I work with those students. So we have a lot of contact with, you know, the folks who are looking to advance their education within the public administration field between that. So we have, again, we're dealing between the folks where, you know, we're talking to, the folks that we've been interviewing with in various communities, our website, all the sources. We bring a lot of names to the table in the sense, we recruit. I think one of the things we talk about in our firm is that we go out and actively recruit folks. We don't just place the ad, you know, out in the paper and let people come to us. We're making the phone calls. We're trying to find people to put on the table for consideration in the communities we work with. So we prepare processes, we work with a position statement, so we work with your staff. We do a lot of interviewing before we start saying we are looking for candidates. We try to get an understanding of the community. So we work with the three of you, we work with your staff, we interview your department heads, and we try to get an understanding of what are the issues. Because what occurs in this process is that candidates want somebody they can talk to. They want a go-between so that there is an understanding, they can have a conversation, because they can't necessarily have that conversation with you as to what, you know, their questions are and what's happening within the community. They want information, and we act as that go-between, you know, with the candidates. We're trying to provide the information. So if they're asking questions that we can't answer, we're trying to get answers for them if it's a reasonable situation to do. So we try to, we try to put all the information together, and we make that available within our position statement with links. So we talk about your annual audit, that's linked within the position statement. We talk about your budget, that's linked within it. The DOR statement, that's linked within. So we try to make sure all the information is linked within the position statement. And the position statement is talking about Holliston. It's talking about your goals, your expectations, you know, as a community. So we try to work that up. We'll develop that position statement, and you get to approve that before we advertise it. Once we have that information together and we have that stakeholder engagement, so we'll work with, you know, your department heads. We sometimes do public forums, you know, with citizens to understand, and we can put that together and get that understanding and put it in, you know, so that candidates can see. So it's not just an application to the Town of Holliston.
Right.
It's an understanding of the town as to what's going on. So with our experience, we get to understand what we would be looking for.
Yeah.
And we try to translate that into the information from you to them.
I like that community part that you mentioned.
We often will do that. Again, not every community seeks it, but if you wish, we come in and basically it's a listening session. We'll give a very brief overview, you know, or you can give that overview, or we give the overview and say, here's what we're looking for. And then we try to work with the audience and we say, well, what's great about this community? We want to know, you know, why do people want to live here in Holliston? And what are you seeking? What, you know, what are you looking for? What are the, in key, what are the attributes you're looking for, you know, in a town administrator moving forward? So we try to, we try to lift that, and again, Sharon, you know, is great at, you know, putting that together and putting that in concise language moving forward. So again, we try to, we customize. We work with you so that the experience is positive for you in moving forward and that you get the best candidates. Again, we always stress, feel free to call, you know, the communities we've worked with. I think, you know, you'll get positive comments. Typically, when we're leaving, we're done, you know, I think they feel that the process was well worth our involvement, working with you.
Well, you came highly referred by town council.
Yes.
Or labor lawyers, and he couldn't say enough about your firm, so.
Bernie's done a great job with Sharon in building the firm up. I'm fortunate to be in the firm now for a year, working with them, and, but they've done a great job in trying to be the leader. So last year, there's maybe four firms who do this within the state. We had more than half of the jobs within the state out of those firms. And so I think, you know, people are seeing the advantage we can bring with the personnel we're putting at the table and the fact that we're very open to the discussions and put the information, you know, what you need, you want to get out there, it's our goal to make sure it's getting out.
You mentioned here about recent experience with the market. What do you see changing with that moving forward?
So the market has changed drastically in the last 10 years. You know, when we looked at it 10 years ago, there were a lot of seasons of people, you know, coming out for the various jobs. I did some review not too long ago, and I was surprised when I saw it. But in the years, 2017, 18, and 19, almost 20% of all managers in the state retired. So in that three-year period, a lot of folks, you know, a lot of us came in in this business in the 80s, you know, because that's when government expanded. That's when municipal government expanded.
I see.
And the positions basically grew within the state. Back in the 50s and 60s, you maybe had 40 or 50 communities with town manager, town administrators. But back in the 80s, things got complicated, particularly after Prop 2 and 1/2, you know, got passed. And life became very complicated. It wasn't as easy where part-time folks, you know, could continue to manage it on a day-to-day basis. So again, there's a huge group of us that came in. And I always give this as an example, about two years ago, I was in a meeting, we had a housing consortium in the Burlington area. There were eight communities involved, so Burlington, Lexington, Bedford, Acton, Concord, Winchester, Weston, and Sudbury. So eight communities. There were eight managers sitting at the table. We had a yearly meeting on it, and seven of us were retiring within a one-year timeframe.
Wow.
So, and all senior people who had been involved, just as Jeff has, you know, over the years, been involved, you know, as a manager, administrator. And there were seven or eight of us, seven of the eight of us, and the eighth person had just replaced a retiring manager.
Jeez.
So, you know, I think that's indicative of what has occurred. So what we're doing now at the market is having to recruit, you know, folks. And sometimes we're able to recruit people who have extensive experience as town administrators. But in some places, we're having to recruit folks who are willing to be your next level of town administrator. We all had to start.
Right.
You know, I didn't, I didn't come in being a town administrator. I had my first job, you know, as one. So we're working with those folks, and that's why we're very active in the training side of things as well. So I've been involved in, 10 years ago, I started what we call Boot Camp for Managers with Jeff Nutting, who retired as a town administrator in Franklin not too long ago. And we started what we call this Boot Camp, a one-day training session with new managers and, you know, who are coming in and talk about the things you don't necessarily learn in school about managing in a town on a day-to-day basis. You know, you know, dealing with select people, dealing with department heads and so on. And so we try to get heavily involved in that training.
Is that through the Suffolk Certificate Program?
No, that's through the Massachusetts Municipal Management Association.
Yeah.
So that's a separate program that we did, and it's actually, they don't charge a fee for that one. That was something they thought was so important that they don't charge a fee for it. So the Managers Association provides that at no cost. And it's done every year in October, and it's a one-day session that has continued.
John, each of us will have questions for you, but I wanted to know if you could share with the folks back home the different options that we have as a town when going through this process. Bernie had shared a couple of different options and how it could work. Could you talk about, one of them was the search committee and they doing more work or you doing more work? Can you explain that to the folks?
Sure. So, and basically, you know, you're having to contend with Massachusetts general law and open meeting situations. So the Board of Selectmen cannot act as a screening committee. You can, but it has to be an open session. And what would happen is that every application that comes in would be public information. Thus, you would have problems in getting applications. Because folks, you know, are willing to become one of three finalists, but they're not willing to, you know, to notice that they're one of 30 applicants.
Right.
You know, potentially for a position. So if you act as a screening committee under general law, you have to do so in public session. By appointing a screening committee, the screening committee works with us, and that screening committee then can review all applications in executive session. They can do preliminary interviews and call that down to a list of finalists to present to the Board of Selectmen. So that's one of the options. The other, some communities have used is allow the consultants to review the applications and go through that and present finalists through that process. But with the screening committee, screening committees typically are seven people. That's probably a reasonable number, you know, to have on a screening committee. Five to seven, you know, is a good number. And having some citizens, you know, involved in that process, then we get to have an idea. And one of the things we want to stress is we're not choosing your town administrator for you.
Right.
You know, our goal is to work with you to hear what you're looking for and to try to express that through the process to make sure our candidates are coming out meeting your expectations. But the decision is solely with, you know, the town and the board in making.
Right.
But with a screening committee, again, if you, and that's the way most communities are going, is with a screening committee. And we work hand-in-hand with the screening committee.
Bernie mentioned both methods are similar in costs. He quoted a price that would be below the 10,000 marks of.
Sure. So, you know, quote you have that's in the paperwork this evening is 9,800.
Right.
And that is providing a process. And with the screening committee without, because again, it's the same amount of work, you know, in screening the candidates.
Okay.
Doing it, we try to bring in maybe another outside view, you know, of those candidates. But again, with your screening committee, we'll sit, we'll talk to the candidates. And then the screening committee is pretty much, they need two meetings for the most part. A one-to-two-hour meeting to screen all the candidates, and we give all applications. We don't, we don't pull back, we don't call. We basically, we have what we call the three-tier system. Tier one are candidates who, you know, have potentially been managers who meet the qualifications. Two are very interesting candidates who have experience, maybe not as a manager, but within municipal sector who can do the job. And then there's the third group. But your, you know, your screening committee sees all those candidates. We work with them in a meeting. Every candidate has history. Every candidate has a story, and sometimes you need to understand those stories, you know, that occurs. When you're in this business, you run into situations, you know, and so we try to explain those situations for, as to each candidate. And then it's pretty much, the second meeting is a full-day interview. So we suggest interviewing seven, six to no more than eight, but seven is a good number because we have found that works well for a screening committee to sit there for a day, give the time necessary to talk to each of the candidates, and then they call that list down to three. No ranking, no, you know, the committee's work is done at that point. From there, we take those three, we do a background check.
Okay.
Which is a formal check at that point. We get references, we check other references, and then we provide a report to the Board of Selectmen on those final candidates.
Great. Tini, do you have some questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The first is, I, did you hire for Easton? I didn't see it on your list here.
No, we did not do Easton.
Then when you have a list here of executive recruitment and you have the ongoing searches that you're involved in.
Yes.
When I go through that list, I only see one that's for a town administrator position. I take that to be a good sign that perhaps there are, the demand for town administrators is not very high. If there's only, if you have 50% of the business, so to speak, in Massachusetts and there's only one ongoing search right now for a town administrator. Am I reading that wrong? Would you like to correct my thinking on that?
Well, first of all, you know, town administrator and town manager, sometimes a town administrator can be stronger than a town manager. So it's not necessarily a town manager is a stronger position.
Okay.
So in, you know, I always use my example in Town of Burlington, I was a town administrator, but I had appointment authority. So you need to look within, you know, the position, you know, as to what it is. And then sometimes it's about what positions tend to be open. So there's more town administrators than there are town managers.
Okay.
It's almost two to one in that sense, because that's the name of the title. So most communities, if you don't have a charter, it's a town administrator. You need a charter to have a town manager, form of government. So it's, it's more tied to the form of government.
Yeah, sure.
You know, and that piece.
I just meant in terms of the demand for finding a qualified candidate, are we up against a lot of other ongoing searches?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I mistook. Right now, there's not that many searches occurring.
Okay.
You're right. So we hit a little bit of, it's been Fast and Furious for a bunch of months.
Okay.
And right now, we're finishing up, you know, for our firm, we're finishing up a meeting with Pembroke Wednesday night.
Okay.
And then Hope Dale.
Yep.
Next week.
Okay.
So those are two, and we're starting a search in Truro. So they're just beginning. But again, that's geographically different.
Yeah.
So a lot of this is by geography within the state. Truro, you know, is going to be a little bit, it's going to attract a different, you know, because you're going to have to find someone who's either living down there or is willing to move, because you can't commute to Truro, you know, from this side of the bridge. You know, it's just not going to happen. So a lot of this sometimes is about the geography, you know, of an area as to how recruits are coming. We did a search in Mattapoiset, we just finished that up. The candidates we got there were totally different from the candidates we got in Hope Dale. Because again, Mattapoiset's not necessarily easy to get to, and so some people, you know, aren't going to pack up and move to consider a position.
Okay.
So I think it's more tied to that.
Okay. I've had some conversations with folks about how one finds a town administrator.
Yes.
And I got an interesting piece of feedback that I just wanted to share and see what your thoughts are on it. There's like a missing group within sort of my generation who were coming out and starting their careers in maybe the late 90s, early 2000s.
Yes.
Who really went into the private sector and aren't really available with public sector experience to be recruited into this position. So you're, you're looking then at two groups of two generations, so to speak, more the millennial generation who are maybe coming into their early 30s now, and then those who have 25-plus, 30-years experience, which you alluded to earlier. Does that sound right to you? Is that your impression of the types of candidates? And if it is, I'm just wondering about the millennial generation, the type of degree, the type of experience one would be looking for with that younger type of candidate who, you know, hasn't had quite as many years of experience in public sector work?
So I think you are correct, that there was this gap period where not a lot of, not a lot of folks entered our business of administrators. So, you know, they're the 50-year-olds today, you know, 45 to 55, there's, I can name a few, but there's not a lot of managers who fall, you know, within, within that age category. We're seeing a lot of younger, you know, managers in big communities. You know, you know, I think of Endover, Arlington, Danvers, you know, Easton, Connor, and Easton. You know, these are all folks who started in their 20s as managers. They were hired, you know, at, in their late 20s, but they had experience, you know. The manager in Endover, you know, had been the assistant manager in Arlington before being hired. And so they had some experience. And so those communities were willing to take a chance, and they've done very well in those communities. So, so they're coming in with various degrees. You know, having a masters in public administration is very nice.
Okay.
But not necessary.
Okay.
I think you've got to blend that with the candidate's experience and the fit of the candidates, you know, coming in.
Okay.
The, you know, what you're looking for in a candidate, you know, some communities are looking for instant change. You know, they're looking for a candidate to come in and, you know, change things up. Other communities are looking for the slow change, you know, keeping things status quo because things are working well. Those are the type of things we try to get an understanding of with you folks and try to pass that on to the candidates. So that they get an understanding of, you know, if you, if you just can't sit still and changes in your nature, and the community's not looking for that, maybe, you know, this isn't the community for you to consider, you know, moving forward. Because it really is about, you know, fit to some extent and making sure that the personalities blend in moving forward. And we try to make sure we're understanding that side both ways, you know, to work with the candidates.
I just have two more questions, ones really quick, ones maybe not so quick. This projected timeline you provided here.
Yes.
It looks like it's about 15, 16 weeks in length.
Correct.
Is this just a template or is this really this timeline that you?
That's a template, and we tend to stay within.
Okay.
And again, it'll, it'll depend on whether the information's coming back, you know, that we need. Can we get the meetings done in time, you know?
It's a reasonable timeline.
It's a reasonable timeline.
Okay.
You know, we ran into, you know, a little slowdown around holidays, you know. If it's not happening, you've got town meeting coming up, so, but we tend to stay within that.
Okay.
And if we're falling outside of that, it's because of reasons that are occurring. It's not because we're unable to, to meet the timeline.
Then the last question I have is, under the prep here on this timeline.
Yes.
Number two, supporting information gathered. So I had a laundry list of things that I think maybe go into the search in my mind. Can you just give some examples? You already mentioned the annual statement, the budget, the DOR statement going into that, supporting information. I'm wondering about other things like, say, a strategic plan. I'm wondering about things like, are you looking for employee performance evaluations? Like what else goes into the supporting information that would be gathered during that time?
So we look for things, we ask about strategic plan, master plan, you know, things of that nature. We're not looking necessarily for your protocols and procedures.
Okay.
We're looking for documents that speak to the community. And there may be questions around, you know, performance evaluation, we'll try to get those answers, but we're not tying that into the links.
Okay.
You know, that may come up, but it's, you know, those are things that, you know, that's part of the detail of the day-to-day job. So what we are looking for is documents that talk about Holliston, talk about your goals, your vision, so that they can see those pieces. Historical documents sometimes, too.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
John, questions, sir?
Hi, it's John. Good evening. How are you? I'm John Cronin. For the last 37 years, Holliston has had only two town administrators.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter would be completing his fifth year. Part of that, we had an individual who was here for 32 years.
Yeah, Paul, I knew Paul.
Right. We see Holliston as a very desirable place to work. We have our challenges. We have some areas of growth and need. You'll be hearing about that should you be selected. But one of the things I want to understand is that some people sitting at home would say, why do we need to give them $10,000 to post a position? What's the secret sauce? What do you guys do to get us the right candidate? But one of the things I want to understand is, some people sitting at home would say, why do we need to give them $10,000 to post a position? What's the secret sauce? What do you guys do to get us the right candidate that we wouldn't ordinarily get through the regular interviewing process? Could you go into a little bit more detail on that, please?
Sure. So, again, it's, it's not about posting the position. Anybody can do that, because there's two places to post for the most part. You know, the MMA and ICMA, you know, are the two places to post. Again, it's, we stress our recruitment capability. So, we work, again, to contact candidates. So, as, as I stated earlier, I met with an individual last week. Looking to, we're doing that on a regular basis.
Are these individuals that are employed, or?
No, they're employed. So, so, many times, they are department heads and looking to take the next step of their career moving forward. So, they know to call us. This is not necessarily a job to us. You know, we, we call ourselves government geeks. You know, this is something, you know, I did this for 40 years as a career, and we believe in, in what we do. So, what we're looking for is to advance the profession. So, a lot of what we do, we necessarily don't get paid for. I talk about the boot camp, I did it this past year. There's no compensation for that. So, that was a day of, you know, time and planning, another day of planning to do that, because it's what we believe, you know, the profession needs. So, we consider, you know, you know, ourselves still civil servants, you know.
So, you have a net, you have a network of candidates?
So, we have the network, and again, we developed that. So, as I stated, we get 5,000 hits a month, you know, on our website. Our network is going to be, I can't put a number, you know, as to how many folks we have. But we're pulling in, let me give you one example. Town of Mattapoiset did a search on their own, and were unsuccessful. They hired us, and we just closed that search two weeks ago. And they were really pleased, you can call them Mattapoiset officials, and they can tell you the difference, of the difference we made. Because they had a great screening committee. It wasn't that they'd have folks working it. But they will tell you that the difference that we were able to put candidates to the table. We talked to candidates. I met with a person a couple of months ago in Florida. I was down in Florida, and I met with him, because he's looking, he grew up in New York, and he's looking for a position up in this area. You know, I had, you know, I had a coffee with him down in Florida to have the discussion relative to that. That's the type of things we're doing, bringing folks to the table. And again, I want to stress the piece of having that go-between, the ombudsman in-between of, you know, we can speak to the candidates, and so we make them comfortable. You know, and, so that they can get comfortable in applying. I know, in my career, I thought about a couple of places, you know, to apply, you know, from time to time. But it's a two-way, this is a two-way process. This isn't, you know, hiring for an entry-level position. You know, you're hiring a senior person, you know, coming in to be the senior person within a community. And they need to have that, you know, that capability of asking questions.
In addition to the recruitment of the candidate, does Community Paradigm Association, will they make a recommendation to us on what type of salary and benefit package we should be looking to recruit from?
We can. We, we do work with communities, you know, on that level, and we can provide information. We've done salary surveys. We have information to that to show a community. We're not here to, to pitch, you know, a salary level, that's a discussion you have. But if you're concerned about that, we provide information to you. We can, we can talk to you about what the market's looking at, and also what communities are doing in various areas. And what could be the impact of that on your search? And so, we do work with you and give you that information. We're fully capable of, we understand that market. We do have information to it. And I've put together several times for communities, you know, at their request, a small salary survey of what's, you know, you know, the managers in that geographic area, you know, are making, and so we've done that several times.
Do you do background checks for the candidates once they reach us?
So, once, as I stated earlier, we do full background checks of your final candidates. What we do is, we typically know the, many of these candidates, you know, coming in. And when working with the screening committee, we've done our own review. We tend to know most of the candidates that are coming in personally, just from our being involved in the business, you know, for many years and being active. And we're able to give the backstories, you know, on, on candidates. If not, we look around. But we are very careful not to violate the candidate's trust. Because in this business, you are not, you know, you, it's not known, we do not let it be known of candidates who are applying until they are finalists in a community. So, you will get a full background check from us on your final candidates being released to you.
When you said full, I'm going to presume that includes a query, in a sense of whether or not they pay their taxes and things like that?
We, we do a query check, and we do a, I'm sorry, accreditation check of their, their credentials. So, we do query and credential check in that sense. And then we do the, the background check with references. And we also make sure we've, we've talked to folks outside of the reference list.
I can envision at some point where we reach the final candidates having the opportunity to go to a candidate's place of employment, for example. They're public at that point? Is that something that you would encourage us to do, or?
That is typically not done in general government, where, you know.
Oh, it was.
In school side, it is a very common, you know, thing that, that occurs. Typically not for town administrator positions, but communities have done that. So, we'd work with you if that's what you wanted to do, we would certainly work with you on that.
I think I heard you, you gave a number to Tini, but I just wanted to check. A community of our size, size of our budget and so forth, how many candidates do you think we can expect would apply?
Typically, we're talking around 30 candidates.
And does that reach international anyways? Are you getting people outside Massachusetts?
We are. Massachusetts, because of its pension law and other factors, high cost of living, we don't get a lot of candidates, but we do work with, you know, candidates and from out of state. We use Skype, you know, for these, for the interviews for these candidates through the initial rounds. And yes, we have worked with candidates. Some communities don't want to discuss. Every community is different when we're, when, you know, when we talk to. But we do encourage looking at candidates outside of Massachusetts. We do advertise, again, with the International City County Managers Association. There's two places anybody's looking at, you know, for these positions, and that's the ICMA website and the MMA website.
Real quickly, and I'll conclude at this. When we hire police officers, we go through assessment centers, we test them under the rigors of a position, we give them scenarios. I'm not sure there's ever, that's type of test, if you will, for a town administrator. But what can you tell us today the Community Paradigm Associates would do to help our screening committee if we do want? Understand the best way to test the candidates for the position here in Holliston?
So, we work with the screening committee on the questions. And what we've been doing is, we actually offer, and it's up to the screening committee, but we offer that, we actually conduct the questioning with the candidates. Because then we pursue, you know, if we hear an answer, we're able to understand maybe, ooh, there's something we need to pursue along, you know, the answer that's just been given. So, in many of these, again, we work with the, the screening committee to conduct that interview. And we provide the background check prior to. And then if something comes up as part of the interview, we pursue that. So, for the most part, we know most of these candidates that are interviewing. And we have the capacity to, to give further background on candidates.
Could you go over this for the residents back home? From start to finish, maybe just a quick summary. I know it'll take a few minutes, but I think it'd be helpful for them to understand the whole process and what you'd be doing.
So, this is the timeline you're talking about as to a recruitment process. So, so there's different stages to recruitment, so preparation and recruitment. So, we will conduct an introductory meeting to review the process, do a consultation with the Board of Selectmen. So, what we like to do is, we like to interview each of the selectmen individually, and, you know, as a whole, to, you know, to get information. We get the supporting information that we've talked about, you know, gathered. We make sure we have all of that. And then there's a community consultation, if, if you wish. So, we'll do a, a public forum relative to that. Some communities want it, some don't. And then we develop that position profile, as discussed. And the profile is a compilation of a lot of this information. But it's linking documents that are important to the community, that give an overview of the community, particularly to your goals relative to it.
That's an added cost to your quote, correct?
No, the, the profile, we'll do, we'll do an extended profile as a, a qualification statement is, is one step. And then we'll do an extended profile, which is much deeper into it, if you wish.
So, the example, I'm sorry to cut you off, John, but the example in the packet that you gave us from North Attleboro, is that the extended one?
That's just a, no, that's a position statement.
So, what gets, what's the position profile? Is that in the packet? Do we see that?
No, it's not in here. We can buy that, but that's, that's typically closer to six to eight pages, and it's deeper into some of the issues.
Pardon me, thank you.
Yep, no problem. So, we review that profile, whichever we've developed with the board. We get your approval of that profile. And then we advertise and recruit. So, that begins the, the big process of getting candidates. We review all applications that come in. As I stated, we do the initial review. And we work into the tiers of the one, two, and three with the screening committee, if you're going with a screening committee. And we work with them on the selection of the semifinalists. We seek approximately seven semifinalists, which is a number we put out there, you know, sometimes it's six, five. We try not to get, you know, much above seven, but seven is the number we utilize. Then we get into the initial interview stage with the screening committee. All this is done in executive session with the screening committee. And so, it's typically a full day of an interview process. And the screening committee selects the finalists. We work with them, we help provide dialogue, you know, on each of the candidates. But it is their selection, we're not choosing your candidates, they are. Then, once that's done, we do a reference and background check. And we make sure that there's nothing there for the candidates that could be embarrassing to the community. And once that's completed, then we refer the finalists to the Board of Selectmen. We present that to you in a meeting, and you'll get that from us, and we'll have the discussion of those finalists with you. The select board at that point will interview finalists. So, after we've presented them to you, we'll set up an interview. And you'll interview those finalists. And how you do that, many communities, it's the Board of Selectmen, and they're making the decision the same night. Other communities, they'll decide that, you know, they interview, and they want a couple of days to think about it and come back. You can have staff interaction, you know, with the finalists. That's, that's up to you. Relative to that, some do a community meet and greet, you know, as part of the process, which often, doesn't occur often, but it has, you know, occurred. Again, we're flexible, you know, to work with, you know, what you're seeking, what your needs are. And then you select the final candidate. And then we provide, you know, we'll help, we don't do your negotiation, we'll give you documents. We'll give you suggested, you know, language for documents. We'll assist you as to getting through your process of negotiating a contract. But we don't do your negotiations. We just simply will answer questions, and we'll help guide how you should move that through the process. You have labor council, you know, and labor council can assist you with the final contract.
Great, thank you. That's a, it's nice to go through the whole process like that for the residents. Now, we'll take any questions from the audience. Anyone would like to ask John a question regarding the, the services that his firm could do for us? Mary?
Mary Greendale.
Yes, Mary, how you doing?
Well, John, how are you?
I'm good, thanks.
So, in the gathering that, under this community consultation option, is that an opportunity to meet with, say, staff in town hall, department heads, those kinds of people?
So, we do that separately. So, the staff, we can do it a couple of different ways. We've done it as a group meetings, but certain staff, department heads, we like to do individual meetings, so that we can, we like to truly understand, you know, the community. So, we like to sit down with the police chief, with the fire chief, public works director, finance folks, and we're asking questions about, you know, we like to make sure we understand, the individual operational needs, you know, of those departments. So, that is done separately from a public, you know, review. Again, if the board wants, we'll do a public session. And we'll, you know, we'll take, you know, questions or comments from the public. We, we, again, we're seeking information.
Holliston has its own special act, the creator, the creation of the town administration position was a, a special act. So, that's just one of the pieces of information. I assume that they would submit to you along with all of the other stuff? Because that's where the position was.
We have our list, you know, so it's of things we ask for. And then towns, we ask them to think about, well, what would you have that maybe, you know, we don't know what to ask for. Every town's a little bit different sometimes and have, you know, certain plans or documents. So, we work with folks, but we know to ask for a master plan, strategic plan, you know, if that occurs, or goals of the board. But the audits, the town reports, you know, any of those type things.
Well, the special act created the position, so that's really the job description.
Correct.
You know? And then, of course, there are some bylaws that also have a relationship to it. But the, the special act is the thing that really drives the whole position.
Mary, I think I missed it. When you asked the question about meeting with town employees, did you say that was during the prep, or towards the end?
No, towards the prep. So, we'll meet with, you know, prior to, we meet with them in developing the, the statement. So, we're trying to get that information. So, we'll meet with you individually, we'll meet with your department heads, you know, relative to that. And if you wish, we have that public forum, you know, as well. And then, that's all used in developing, you know, our information. So, we want to make sure we've heard all that prior to putting out the, because once the ad goes out, now we're having to be able to address candidates and answer questions.
Any other questions from the audience? Chris, any questions? Mary, any questions for?
I have two more quick ones.
Go right ahead.
Real quick, John. What if a candidate appears from outside this outline process? Is that a possibility, or you have strong preference against that, and you've never seen it happen? So, if a candidate would sort of come up through and make themselves known, but they did not come through your process?
They, you know, if they submit a, we ask that they come through our, you know, our website. But if an application came to the Board of Selectmen, we're not rejecting it. You know, we'll put that into the pool. So, if it came to your office directly, instead of through, you know, the website, we're not going to reject the candidate because of that.
And then what if the screening committee does not advance three candidates? Or two, or one? What if they, you get to a loggerhead with the screening committee?
Well, then the Board of Selectmen needs to weigh in. Because, you know, the, the charge, I assume, you know, from you to them, we always ask, you know, you give that charge to the screening committee, you know, of, you know, select three candidates to bring to us. Sometimes it'd be in a question of whether it should be four, you know, candidates, so we can, we can work with that. But not, you know, if it's less than three, then we ask the screening chair, to, the screening committee chair, to go back to the select board and say, you know, is less than three? Because here's why we're looking at that. So, we, we want to make sure that everybody's being talked to at all levels within the process. We try to be flexible, you know, we're not going to say, well, there's no way we're going to do that, because we're, we're here to work for you. And so, you know, we need to be flexible based on your process. And these things have come up. There was a community where only two candidates, you know, were selected to be finalists, because they just did not feel that there was a third that fit the qualifications of the first two. And that was, that was fairly recently. And if the selectmen were comfortable with that, we're comfortable with that. So, they interviewed only two candidates. So they interviewed only two candidates at that point because the screening committee, you know, was, was, you know, clear that they just didn't feel there was a third candidate. So took a recess, we got an understanding, and only two candidates went, moved forward. So that, that can occur of what happened. So we try to be flexible. We're in a community where one candidate backed out and we're having to, you know, they want a third candidate. So we're working with the screening committee to bring a third candidate because they did have somebody they selected as an alternate. So we're working to potentially bring that, you know, candidate in to replace. Again.
Things happen.
Things happen and, you know, we're about, we work for you and we want to make sure you folks are comfortable with what's occurring and we'll, you know, we'll be flexible on our end.
Okay. Ben is here from the Finance Committee. Do you have any questions for John?
I don't think so. I mean, I think, because at the end of the day, I think this is your process. So I think it's, I think it's pretty straightforward as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. If you had any questions, should we hire them? They would meet with your committee anyway and ask questions, so you can ask questions then too. But if there's anything on your mind tonight, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Sharon, do you have any questions for John? No? Okay, very good. Well, thank you.
Okay.
We appreciate it immensely that you're coming. Do you have any other comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so we will vote on this at another time, probably look at some of the references, okay?
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you very much. And, you know, any questions? You certainly have our information. I'll give you.
Got my card here.
Thank you, John, I appreciate it.
Feel free to call. Thank you, sir.
Thanks for the great presentation too. Really cover a lot for us, so appreciate it immensely. It's okay, I'd like to take a five-minute break?
Yes, that's my deal.
Okay?
Sure.
Five-minute break, and then we'll go back on.
And everything costs a lot of money, so we have to be realistic and probably look at things over a period of time. But anyway, that meeting is Wednesday this week, 7:00 PM.
Here.
And it'll be in this room, 7:00 PM. And it's an open, public meeting, anyone who wants to attend can. So that's all I have for public comment. Any from the audience? Any public comment? No. Okay, thank you. Report of the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, I've got a very short report for you tonight. Our facilities manager is going to be scheduled to start on Monday, March 16th, and I'm working on an orientation schedule for him. And so he gets on the ground running, and he's going to be meeting with several department heads over the next several days after he starts. So just start to get oriented and, you know, get his feet down the ground.
And where will his office be, just for the residents?
It'll be on, at the Foundry.
Okay.
Yep.
With the water department.
Correct.
On Central Street.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
In case anybody wants to talk to him, they could make an appointment with him.
Yep.
He'll have an office there.
Yep. The vision is that any department head who has a building is going to have time carved out on his orientation schedule so they can sort of review what the issues are with their buildings.
Sure.
So that's the, and then I'm gonna be meeting with him also about several of the outstanding items that we have.
Okay.
And reviewing some of the budget issues, not issues, but some of the budgetary items that are out there that would ultimately come under his jurisdiction.
Okay. So he'll probably announce his office hours and that sort of thing?
Yes, I would think so, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. As you know, we had an issue at 310 Woodland Street with the DEP and the removal of a building, an abandoned structure on, at 310 Woodland Street. A plan has been submitted to DEP, and the plan for the asbestos abatement has been approved by the DEP. So I think we're within budget. I'm not positive of that at the moment. We're waiting for contracting prices for the, for the complete removal and the final cleanup. But we have a little bit of money there that's a buffer for that to happen.
Okay.
The town, annual town meeting warrant is before you. It's a, I want you to just stress that this is a first draft of the annual town meeting warrant. There are several items that are out there that are going to require, this is an item on your agenda later on tonight, but there are several items out there that are gonna require further attention. And I'm not sure if they're gonna be fully ready for May or not.
Okay.
But the objective is to try to capture a safety net of all the items that are out there. Some of them are gonna be placed off until October, but the idea is to get it before you so you can start thinking about these. I just would point to, one of the topics is the master plan, for instance. It's a lot of, lot of work, a lot of work that has to go into that before you get it ready for town meeting.
Right.
So, but it's on the list.
Okay.
And that list should go forward into October. Finally, Tina and I, and several members of the staff, had a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant meeting last, the Wednesday, I think it was. And we've come up with, again, in your agenda packet, a draft of the MVP/RFP, requests for proposals. Hopefully, the board will take a look at that tonight, approve it, and we can issue it tomorrow, and we get it on the street and get some responses in within the next couple of weeks.
Great.
That's all I have.
I have two quick questions, Jeff. Do we have a moderator lined up for Wednesday evening for the meeting, the tri-board meeting?
At this point in time, I don't know.
Okay.
I know that, I invited Bill Mayer to be there.
You did?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I did.
Okay.
He was in court today.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure where he stands at the moment, but we invited him.
And then the budget that you mentioned for 310 Woodland, is that the town, that was appropriated at fall town meeting?
Correct, $25,000.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Questions, John?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, John. I mean, thank you, Jeff. Okay. Next up, we're gonna move up Colonial Power. If you'd come up and sit here, introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Good evening. Mark Capadona from Colonial Power, 5 Mount Royal Ave, Marlboro, Mass., 01752.
Denise Hallard from Colonial Power Group as well.
We were here probably two, two and a half months ago, speaking about the municipal aggregation program and kind of a few options that we had. And we're kind of at the point now where the market has moved and kind of supplies favor here, so you actually have a little bit of an advantage, we're at about a six-year low with natural gas. So we have spoken with Jeff just to talk about options that the town has in front of them. And we, what we've been trying to do is set up a time that he would have the ability to look at executable pricing. I believe it's for Thursday.
Correct.
This coming Thursday, that he would, he would have the ability to sign a contract from the supply community, offering him options, given new pricing. The current contract you have goes through, I believe, December of 2020.
Yes.
But given the favorable market conditions, we thought it would be a very advantageous time to look at new pricing for the town. So we're here to see if the, if the town is willing to give Jeff the authority to sign off if he finds the pricing to be advantageous.
Okay, great. Questions?
I have a couple. So you just mentioned the current pricing of 11 cents, well, 11,273 per kilowatt hour. That's through till December of 2020. This is not to renegotiate that agreement, this is for the next one.
That's exactly correct.
Why is Holliston's rate a little bit higher than neighboring towns like Ashland and Natick who have it a little, because when you do it out over the math for, for my household, it ends up being about $15 more a year that I'm paying for the rate that we currently have. Why is Ashland and Natick, why are they a little bit lower?
So it would probably have to do with timing. So I know that Ashland was out after you the last time, their, their contract is currently up as well.
They'll be getting pricing on Thursday as well, they're, they're through December.
So you, you're situated in a very interesting place. You have some SEMA and some NEMA load here, which at the time you, you last went out, SEMA pricing was a little bit higher. So I, although that, that has actually come back down, it was a capacity issue.
Yeah.
Which is now no longer an issue, so I do expect you to get favorable pricing in that way, as well as electricity prices are really, we're at rock bottom prices right now.
Should we anticipate then that what we currently have will be lower?
Yes.
Okay, definitely.
Yes, you should.
Okay. And then who files the, who files and what is the timeline for the amended aggregation plan with DPU if, so Department of Public Utilities, if we were to explore some of those opt-in features like 100% green option for residents? Who manages that? Is that you?
Yes.
Okay. And then do, right now Holliston has the, is it basic, like what, Basic Brown?
Because it's just standard product.
It's Basic Brown.
And so it does have, when people say brown, they, believe it or not, in 2020, it's 24% renewable.
Okay.
But that, that is required by the, the RPS or the Renewable Portfolio Standard.
It's the same as basic service.
Yeah, okay. Will that be discussed in the phone call on Thursday? The idea of opting in and amending our aggregation plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
Just, can you talk about competitive electric suppliers and what Holliston residents might want to know about competitive electric suppliers?
So there's two ways to look at this. In the aggregation program, we kind of turn the table on the electric supplier. I would be very cautious of individual electric supply contracts, just look out for the small print. According to the Attorney General, these, 99% of them don't produce any savings at all. As a matter of fact, over the last three winters, have cost participating consumers $357 million more than if they just stay with basic service. That is not the case for municipal aggregation. We kind of turn the tables on the suppliers there. We say you're going to serve our terms and conditions, meaning there's no opt-outs, we can come back in at any time, those kind of things. Where the individual solicitations, some of them have large penalties to leave early. There's fees if you, don't join in time, if you leave too soon. I just say, be careful, there's a lot of lost leader prices. You get one price, and then the price will change. These contracts that we have, they're solid. We sign them upfront, it's a public process, and everyone will know, knows what's going on ahead of time. So it's, it, there's none of that, I don't want to use the word like bait and switch, our contract, we know exactly what the price is for 36 months, just make sure, I'm not sure if you're asking, the suppliers serving us are individual supply contracts? Individual supply contracts should be looked at with a fine, you know, go over them, because the, the small language will get you.
Is this a door knock, is this a phone call, is this a mail?
It's, believe it or not, right now, all of them. The Department of Public Utilities is out trying to actually tap down some of, some of the stuff that's going on, because the, the door knocking and stuff like that, and incessant mailing, they just want to make sure that there's no deceptive practices being used.
Okay.
So they're out there trying to curb some of that right now.
Okay. Last question is, could you just speak about the energy manager adder?
So right now, the town's approved to take an energy manager adder, it's capped at 1 mil, which is .001. So current rate is the 11,273, so it would, if you were to add, say, 1 mil, that would be point, so that would be 11,373 on the price. So that's currently in the town's plan, the town has approved, you can implement that at any time. It would just be on the next meter read. And then the, the competitive supplier, that payment would go to the town, it would be for the sustainability coordinator and some of his responsibilities associated with the aggregation and other things.
Okay.
John, questions?
Yes, on that point right there, because you, you got me. Approximately how much would that be based on Holliston's consumption in a given year?
So it's roughly $3,400 a month. So 2019, you're looking at about $43,000.
And can those funds be used for any costs associated with the position, or is it isolated just for salary, for example?
No, any cost for that position.
Benefits and things like that?
That's correct.
Okay. Looking at the market right now, can you tell me what kind of percent change the homeowners will see if we sign today?
So we, believe it or not, we actually had pricing. Now, it wasn't in Enstire, but it was a similar community in SEMA, and we saw some pricing in the low 10s. So we, you'd probably see from that maybe a 10 or so percent reduction from there.
From the current?
From the current.
Okay, great.
That's correct.
My last question, you mentioned that this is a 36-month contract, once signed?
It's up to the manager what he feels, right now we're seeing very favorable prices, the curve is flat, and out that way is our best pricing.
So we're gonna show you six months, all the way to 36?
Six, 12, exactly.
At six-month end.
Okay.
So that'll all be on the, on the matrix on Thursday, the triple C.
That's where I was going. I wanted to see what the trend was out that far. What, maybe you can answer that. What is the trend out that far right now?
Believe it or not, so it's a backwardated curve, so literally as you start to go out there, you're getting some better pricing. It's a, it's an interesting time, so very flat. If you went out one year, you'd see things in the mid-10s, and then as you get out there, you probably see it fall off two or three mils.
What's causing the natural gas glut?
So we, I'll say we've had a very warm winter. So historically, I think we're number two as far as winter goes, and we were producing a tremendous amount of natural gas. Unfortunately for us, here in New England, we're in a constrained area, otherwise pricing would even be much lower than it actually is. But natural gas is below $2 in the front month, which we haven't seen in six years, and we are, we expect, you know, it's going to stay there for a little while, but it's unsustainable at this price. Nobody makes money at under $2 gas that produces natural gas. Some of the geopolitical, I'll say, virus out there is going to continue to keep this glut here for a little while, I think. We're not going to see as much gas be exported out of the US, just because factories and so forth are shutting down in other countries.
Interesting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Interesting. Very good. I think Tina asked the questions I was gonna ask, so I'm in good shape there. Do we have any questions from the audience? No, nothing. Jeff, no question? Okay. Do we have a motion?
So would you care to give us the language, or is it just a simple, provide a motion to the town administrator to, or empower the town administrator to enact or sign off on agreements related to natural gas aggregation?
Well, so would be electricity aggregation. That would be, other than that, what you had. It's going to be electricity, not natural gas.
Beg your pardon?
Yep.
So moved, right?
Well, do you, would you want us to include language about opting in for other options? Like, does Jeff need that authority on Thursday morning to do that?
As long as he can sign off on the contracts, he can make that, as long as you let him know what you're, it'll all be in the same.
Right, so the motion should include, to include the add manager option.
Do we have a second?
Second?
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Your presentee.
Nice to meet you.
Okay.
Can you get me that language?
Yes.
Next up, we've got the annual audit. Marzelli and Clark Associates, come on up, please. We have our esteemed treasurer here as well, I don't know if you'd like to come up as well. And our town accountant, if you want to come up and sit up front, in case there's questions. Two can answer for us.
Thank you.
You sure you don't want to come up?
What did you say?
I don't know, I guess they're timid tonight.
Good evening. My name is Torenzio Vopacelli, I represent the firm of Marzelli, Clark &amp; Associates. Thank you for having me, ladies and gentlemen. Before we get started, I've actually provided a formal copy of our required communications to Administrator Ritter. I'm going to very briefly go through some of the highlights, because this might put you to sleep. We were engaged to perform an audit of the financial statements of the town for the year ended June 3rd, 2019, for which we've communicated our, our requirements under governmental auditing standards in a letter to the town dated February 15th, 2019. Management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies. Those policies can be found in Note 2 of the financial statements. Accounting estimates are an integral part to any set of financial statements. The most sensitive estimates affecting the town pertain to net pension liability, the net OPEB liability and allowances for doubtful accounts. In the case of the net pension liability and the net OPEB liability, those are actuarially determined. Net pension liability is being actuarially determined at the Middlesex County Retirement System level, and the OPEB is being performed in-house through the use of an independent actuary. And then you have your estimates for doubtful accounts. Those are your three most significant estimates. The disclosures surrounding those estimates are pretty significant within the financial statements, those can be found in Notes 2, 3, and 4. We're pleased to report to you that we've had no significant difficulties in dealing, dealing with management and performing and completing our audit. For the purposes of this discussion, we've had no disagreements with management in financial accounting, reporting, or auditing matters. And we requested certain representations from management that were included in a formal management representation letter dated December 16th, 2019. Again, the full context of this letter has been provided to Administrator Ritter. We've issued a set of financial statements, audited financial statements with a clean or unmodified opinion dated December 16th of 2019. Overall, the town should be very proud, it's got a wonderful, a strong financial condition. Your governmental funds, which are the set of financials within your audited financial statements that most closely resemble your statutory records, report an excess fund balance of over $26 million at June 30th of 2019. A little more than half of that is in the general fund, about 13.3 million, and the majority of that is what's referred to as unassigned, so effectively available to the town to meet any and all of its needs. You also have 6.3 million of that 10.4 is your general stabilization fund. You have nearly $2.5 million accumulated in your CPA fund, over $3.6 million in your capital investment fund at June 30th of 19, and over $6.6 million in your non-major governmental funds. And that is essentially the aggregate catch-all of your permanent funds, your trusts, your endowments, your capital projects, and all of your revolving funds, federal grants, state grants, parks and rec, whatever those might be. Compared to the budget, the general fund has exceeded expectations by over $1.7 million in revenues in 2019 versus $1.3 million in 2018. The town has a nice trajectory as to where its revenues are, have been going. Town's debt load is extremely manageable. Your long-term debt is roughly $12 million in your governmental activities. Water has roughly $4.8 million, and golf is only $140,000. I believe that's scheduled to be paid off in 2021. And it's been, uh...
It's the golf club, yeah.
That's the golf club, and that's been profitable since as long as we've been out here, which for many communities that have golf courses, that's not something you can, you can say. The town is very well-funded in its OPEB plan. Your actuary estimates you to be in the top 15% of the state as far as funding, might even be a little higher than that. And your net pension liability is managed by the Middlesex County Retirement System, which is essentially outside of the control of the town. However, the town has been making additional appropriations of modest amounts of money to assist in, in knocking down that net pension liability over the years. So the town has done some very good, has done a very good job in stewardship of its, of its assets.
And would you recommend doing more toward the Middlesex Fund?
That, that becomes a budgeting question. I, I think what we're seeing a lot of communities starting to do now is actually set up a separate stabilization fund, specific to pension. Right now, you're part of the Middlesex County Retirement System, which at December 31st of 18, which is what's reported in your 2019 numbers, was only 46% funded. And if we took a look at between now and 2040, which is the mandatory fully funded date, June 30th, 2040, and we look at the trajectory of your payments, these are going to escalate higher and higher. So what we're seeing a lot of communities start to do is to start putting some money into a specific pension stabilization fund to mitigate the effects of those higher rate increases in the next 10, 12, 15 years as you're moving out. That's, that seems to be the course. If you have extra money to put aside, pay, make extra payments, you're still part of a larger group. By doing the pension stabilization fund, you control your destiny there.
Okay. So that's something we should advise the finance committee to, to, to...
So, Mr. Chairman, we have an article, a draft article in the warrant for May. I don't have any reference in the article for what Massachusetts general law that is tying back to that allows us to do that. So any information you can feed to me on that would be really helpful, I think. I inserted a number of $50,000 to put into that fund, that stabilization fund for the retirement system, but again, the bread is still in the oven cooking, and I need some help on that.
I will contact you on that.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Great advice.
Any questions, comments, or concerns about the financial statements themselves?
Tina?
Um, well, in one of the documents, you identified that there are seven credit factors when we went out to have our bond rating.
That would be the management letter, yes.
Yeah, correct. I'm just wondering if you could speak to the strengths in Holliston in regards to those seven credit factors, if there are areas that we should focus on, if you have any additional information that you would share. I did read the management letter, I'm aware of what's in there, but I didn't know if you could provide a little narrative there on those seven credit factors.
Okay, okay. I think it might, it might make sense to just take a very quick, 30,000 feet, what exactly is the S&amp;P credit rating model? So Standard and Poor's is one of the two primary credit rating facility agencies in the United States, the other being Moody's. And they have a process by which they rate your general obligation bonds, the creditworthiness of them. And they have seven criteria that Ms. Hein has mentioned. And each metric is given a score from 1 to 5. And the scoring is more in line of golf than it is in gymnastics, the lower the score, the better. 1 being the best score, 5 being the worst score. And as each, each metric has its own weighting also. So the institutional framework, which is one of the credit rating metrics, is rated at 10%, whereas management, which speaks to really the policies, procedures within the community, is at 20%. And then the town's economy is at 30%. Budgetary flexibility is at 10. Perform, budgetary performance is at 10, liquidity is at 10, and then debt and contingent liabilities are at 10%. That'll round out your 100%. So each one of those scores, S&amp;P evaluated the community, and the community scored it very high. I believe that we met with them roughly four weeks ago, and S&amp;P provided the town with an AA-plus stable credit rating, which is their second highest credit rating that they offer, which is, which is, which is an impressive credit score. They, they did rate you very strong in many categories, and then strong in others. So the lack of the word "very" is, is kind of the indicator, this is the area that we need to focus in on, or you rather, need to focus in on, in making an improvement if you wanted to get to that higher level of AAA community. Did that answer your question?
Well, I have your, yeah, I think I have your summary after that call.
Can I ask a follow-up on that, if you don't mind?
Yes.
Did your organization help, did your, has your organization provided us a roadmap based on the feedback from that rating call, and the things we should focus on going forward to achieve a higher rating? We've heard from the after-action that there was some anecdotal information. For example, there's, there was some concern that the town lacked sufficient stabilization funds to receive various types of revenue and to direct them. Does your firm take the space of advising us to do such and such through our finance committee and so forth? Do we have that?
We have, we have communicated with the management of the town based on what we've interpreted S&amp;P, what, what their report had said. We also spoke with your bond advisors, Unibank, about this. And in reading through the, the S&amp;P report, when we take a look at how their report was laid out, and we run it through our metrics, which we've actually worked with S&amp;P several years ago, and as a firm, have done a number of trainings throughout the state to help communities better understand their ratings and help to improve them, we came up with an aggregate score of 1.4 on, on the rating. A 1.3 or lower is generally the golden standard for AAA. 1.3 to 1.5, you're in the conversation. So you folks are in the conversation. It's worth, it's worth going through the process. So we have, we have shared some of that. You folks hit the 15% reserve ratio in 2019, but you weren't there in 2018. I think S&amp;P, reading between the lines, and I can only read between the lines because I'm not S&amp;P, reading between the lines, they would like to see that be more of a sustained period of time. So if you had that again at fiscal '20 and in fiscal '21, 15, 16, 17, 18%, I think that that would behoove the organization greatly.
So you mentioned you communicated that to us. Do we have something in writing?
It was, it was in an email.
Okay.
We could put it in formally, in a letter to, to the town.
Did it go to that town administrator?
It would, it would be covered with all kinds of legalese and caveats, of course, but we can certainly, we can certainly, we can certainly do.
Thank you.
At that time, did, were there recommendations on steps the town could take to keep the reserve ratio 15% for the upcoming years? So you, you say 2018, we were not there, 2019, we were, so that was a little bit of, not a red flag, but a little bit of a note in the review?
You're moving in the right direction.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you give recommendations on how to keep it there, or are there...
Well, a lot of that comes down to the budgeting and where you're allocating your funds. So this, this town has got a wonderful, wonderful reserves. Some of the reserves you don't get credit for in the S&amp;P credit model, nor in the Moody's credit model. So you have this wonderful capital investment fund. However, where it's classified on the balance sheet for, under GAAP, places it in qualitative world and not the quantitative world. We can speak to... We can speak to it and management spoke to it on several occasions in the, in the call, but it, it doesn't go into the calculation. So perhaps a cultural change within, within the organization, instead of moving the monies from an appropriation into the capital, maybe it goes from the appropriation into stabilization, and then when you need to use it, because you have to appropriate it anyways, you could move around.
Because capital is restricted inherently.
Exactly, exactly. So when S&amp;P does their model, they look at what's assigned and unassigned, and in this case, that is what's referred to as committed. And I know I'm pouring the heck out of the people in the audience.
No, I think it's very interesting.
Yes.
The police officers are grip right.
So it is, so some of, some of that is geography, but it, it's still a wonderful story. It really is, to have the CPA fund, to have that capital stabilization fund, to have an OPEB fund that was, is it 37% Jeff?
Nearly 40%.
Nearly 40% funded. It really puts you in the forefront. And by the way, when I talk to the actuary, a lot of the communities that are ahead of you are communities that have $800,000, $900,000 socked aside because they only have 60 or 70 employees. So if we, if we were able to truncate these populations, I think it'd even be more impressive.
Interesting. Very interesting. You also looked at the CPC funding, and how do you rate that compared to other towns?
Oh, I, I'm not, don't have that information in front of me right now. I have a number of communities that have CPC funds. I'd have, I'd have to, I'd have to benchmark that.
I'm just wondering how we're doing compared to other towns with our, with our spending on that and our...
So I, I work with a number of communities nearby. I can certainly do an analysis to benchmark, and all this is public information, which is nice, but I can benchmark that information against that.
That'd be great, thanks. Don't mind. Any other questions, sir?
I have quite a few actually.
Go right ahead.
No, I was yielding to Ms. Hein, I thought you still had more.
I have one more. So you talk about, or rather, they look at, budgetary performance is considered, and so my question is this, given that the budget in Holliston, as in many towns, is about 50% towards the school committee, the school department, division, district's budget, how does the quality of the education in Holliston affect a process like going through our credit rating review?
You certainly look at the quality of education, what you're spending per pupil, and that, and that's, that's a leading indicator as to why there's been an inflow of people into the community over, over the years and, and the size of the developments and the new homes that have been put up. And that, that speaks not only to your budgetary, but also to the general economy. So they, they do make reference to that, they do take a look at that.
John?
Trenzio, I have a few questions. Some of them are around, we already touched. I'd like to be brief in the interest of time, just to get the question out, get a quick answer, if you don't mind. The questions reflect my own, as well as a member of the Finance Committee who could not be in attendance tonight, okay? First question, what were your expectation of the rating exercise as we submitted? Did you have any?
Well, as a town's independent audit firm, I'm not in a position to give an absolute opinion on, on, on what that process was or what my expectations might be. So this is not going to constitute an opinion of our firm, but really just my observations as to, to the town's operations and S&amp;P process. As I indicated, we did an analysis of the numbers and it showed you all in the conversation. So, for, for being a AAA community. Certainly, an AA-plus stable is a remarkable credit rating, puts you, you know, ahead of most communities. So coming into the conversation, coming into these, these presentations, there was a thought that perhaps there is a chance. Of course, there was. You were, you're in the conversation, so I guess, I guess, does that explain my expectations?
I had a feeling you were gonna, you know, be Switzerland there, so we'll have to take that. Next, do you believe Holliston's perceived strengths and weaknesses during the call were adequately described?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Do you agree with the rating agency's finding of AAA+?
Well, again, as the independent auditor, AA-plus stable, as your auditor, it's not my, my, my place to go.
How in your opinion do you compare our fiscal position in that rating to other communities that you audit?
I took a look at the town of Holliston and I compared it to four other communities that were nearby that are all AAA that I audit. One of them is an H-town that's relatively close, one of them is an H-town that's relatively far away, one of them is an M-town, and one of them is an M-city.
They're not here, you can say names.
I prefer not to.
Okay.
When we took a look at you, what was your credit rate? Obviously, you were the AA+, and they were the AAA's, and the timing, one of the funny aspects was you folks had a rating call where you're using the December 31st, 2018 Middlesex County Retirement System numbers. And that was unfortunate because we had a, a loss in the system that year, which reflected negatively in, in the net pension liability. Had that been one year earlier, where they'd have done 17% in the stock market, it would have been a little bit of a different story. Some of those other communities had their calls with 17%. So some of that was a little, was a little off. When we took a look at the reserve ratio for the one year, again, it was only one year, of the five communities, you were the fourth lowest. There was one community that was a little bit lower than you. But that community had been at that level consistently for several years. When we look at the equalized value, you come right in the middle of those, those communities. What was your retirement system? Again, two of them were Middlesex County, one of them was Worcester County, one was in Norfolk County, and the other one had its own pension system, which was at roughly 86% funded. And then the equalized value per capita, you're right in the middle, and the income per capita, you're all right in the middle. Interestingly enough, the, the city had some of the worst numbers there, they just happened to be swimming in cash. You know, $35 million excess levy capacity, don't do proposition two and a half, they have a lot of things going for it. And by the way, when they had their S&amp;P call, they were AA-positive for many years, that last year, they didn't even prepare for it. It's at five minutes, they did a, you know, full call of AAA, they were shocked at how that happened. We've been preparing for years and years, and the year that we don't put much effort into it is the year that we got the AAA. So, you know, where do you fit, you're, you're in the conversation.
It sounds like a little more in the conversation. We are, we are there, as far as I can hear from you.
Well, I think the hard, the hard part is...
In that basket.
And the hard part is, is that being part of Middlesex County, we have gotten feedback from members of, of S&amp;P that Middlesex County is one of the worst performing retirement systems in the state. And we have intelligence from 1W-town in which, in which that was the mitigating factor. And then the other is, is you need to be at that 15, a magical 15 to 18 or even higher for a sustained period of time. Being there one year, you really need to get there a little, a little longer.
Do you believe there's any value in pursuing a rating review by another agency, Moody's?
Well, the other agency would be Moody's, and I don't think you would qualify for AAA for the Moody's. Some of their, they have some really stringent requirements, it'd be very difficult.
John's very much a competitor, he can't help it.
Oh, he's a wonderful question.
I think you got the questions in advance, so the next one hopefully will help you do the math real fast. And Trenzio, how much money does the rating difference between AAA+ and AAA equate to on a, say, $100 million bond over 20 years?
As we understand it, we're talking about a 10 to 20 basis point difference, so 0.1% to 0.2% on the effective interest rate. Assuming a 2.5% effective rate, your, and total interest over 20 years would be roughly $27.7 million. A 10%, I mean, a 10 basis point decrease would be about a $1.2 million savings, and a 20 basis point would be about $2.4 million savings. So the savings is significant over 20 years. Individually, each year, it's not terribly significant, but over the long run, all of it is.
In your opinion, was Holliston adequately prepared and represented for the rating review?
Yes.
What processes, what process changes do you recommend so checks are deposited more timely? These we have not seen. These are questions from the Finance Committee.
Well, one of the, it's a matter, it's a matter of perhaps the, the turnover policy being redistributed, additional communication, and when you're not receiving turnovers, following up with the department, why am I not getting these turnovers? Do you, are you holding on to any monies? And a lot of times, a department will hold on to some funds because it's $50, $100, $300, and they don't think it's, it's significant. But if that's a check that was issued two and a half months ago, the longer you hold it, the greater likelihood that that check might bounce because somebody's just not keeping track with their, with their checkbook, and so that, that does happen.
The following questions will bounce in and out of the rating issue, so forgive me. Some of them are more related to our financial operations and the rest are for the rating call. There is no purchase order system here in town. Should it be used? Why or why not? Do you have an opinion?
That, that's a management decision. A lot of times, a lot of times with smaller communities, we don't see it being used. Most, most large cities do use it. So a lot of that comes down to the size, complexity of, of an organization.
So as our auditor, you don't have a recommendation on that?
Well, as an auditor, I would love to see it in use.
Shame on you.
It's not, it's not...
Strike that from the record, please.
It's certainly not a requirement. It does not, it does not impede any of the internal controls that are mitigating controls, but it certainly is a best practice, of course it is.
In 2018, the Finance Committee learned that routine telephone bills were being expensed against a fund that was established with monies from cellphone tower rental fees. No one could find any documentation approving the use of these funds to pay for the routine phone bills. Were you aware of that?
No, I don't, that doesn't ring a bell.
What are other towns and cities doing to lower its liability for retirement obligations, given the Middlesex County retirement issue you just talked about?
Yeah, we mentioned the pension stabilization fund and that's essentially making additional payments into the system.
And if I, if I, I talked to Mary about that afterwards. They, they wanted to see, they didn't want to see small amounts every year, they wanted to see large movements every couple of years.
Or so.
That was a conversation I had with Trenzio, where we've been putting an extra $40,000 to our obliga, our unfunded liability. Trenzio mentioned the setting up of the stabilization fund, getting to a point where we deposited a larger...
So it'd be put in annually, around, say, $40,000 a year, and then when you reach 120, 150, then push it towards the retirement. That looks better for us, is that correct?
Essentially, the pension stabilizations, as I've seen them used, is, is not to make larger payments to the system, but to mitigate the effects that these larger rate increases. Right now, I believe your next year is supposed to go up 6.4%. It might go as high as 10% per year. So by putting this money aside, you can draw it down and use that as a source of funds for your budget, so it doesn't, you don't feel that 10%,
Right.
That 10% increase. That's how we've seen it thus far. Could it be used as, as you're describing it? Perhaps, but that's not how I've seen it though.
Our town finance department, some of them are here tonight, how would you grade their performance during this process?
I think that what we saw that, that day was, was done very well, very professionally. Everyone had a script, there were a whole lot of questions that were thought about in advance that we, we had, as a group, had answers to. Many of them, questions weren't asked, but we were ready for them in, in the event that they were. So I think the group did a very good job.
And you've worked with them for years, right?
I worked with them for years, I worked with, I think I signed about 21 different communities, audit reports, I worked with 21 different communities.
Speaking of audit, other towns have an audit committee. Do you recommend Holliston establish one? Why or why not?
Again, best practice is to have an audit committee. And what the audit committee would do would be to meet with the audit firm, the internal resources, so your finance team to set expectations, set goals. It's a group that could liaise with the auditors between order selection. So would I recommend it? Yes, it's a, it's a great control.
Those are all the questions I have, Ms. Chair.
Excellent. Any other questions? Any from the audience? Any questions? Jeff? No questions? Okay, thank you.
It's a pleasure. Usually people just ask me, how's my OPEB doing? So, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time tonight.
And several of those questions were from the Finance Committee, which was great to have their input, so thank you. All right, next we've got our treasurer, collector, to come talk to us about employee benefits.
John, was your first question, Trenzio said it was best practice, it was after the balance sheet that you had there, the email. Yeah. It was best practice. Thank you. I printed you out copies of the budget, because it's all legal paper and it might be hard to read on your regular paper.
And folks back home, this is our town treasurer, Mary was gay.
So we have two budgets tonight. We have the benefit budget and then we have the revised debt budget.
What is it?
The revised debt budget too.
Color coordinated. Yeah. Much easier to read, it'd be in color.
Sorry about the pink paper, it was in the printer, so didn't want to waste a tree.
It works, as long as we're not in the red, you know?
That's right. So this budget has two different columns. We have the no allocation column, that is the original budget, and then we, we do allocations from the Veterans District, the Water District, and extended day for the after allocation column. So the first one is county retirement. The no allocation column is $2,429,118. After allocations of $134,070. The non-allocation col, the after allocation column is $2,144,455. And in that column, we have $43,524 going to our unfunded liability. Work is comp, the no allocation column is $324,600. We have allocations of $20,125, for a total after allocation budget of $302,072. Disability insurance, no allocation column is $35,400. We have allocations of $617 for an after allocation amount of $32,367.
We skipped unemployment here.
Oops, sorry. Unemployment is $50,000, that hasn't changed from last year. We've been lucky with unemployment so far. Life insurance, the no allocation column is $16,000. We have a allocations of $911 for an after allocation amount of $15,089. Health insurance, should have brought a ruler, no allocation, $5,355,304. We have total allocations of $163,521 for an after allocation amount of $5,191,783. Health insurance for the active employees went up an average of 5.2%, where retirees was lower than that.
Wow.
The employee mitigation amount is $10,000 in both columns, and that is for the employee opt-out program that we have through our PEC agreement. We have our HSA contribution of $70,000 in both columns, and that is the amount that the town contributes to the HSA for employees on the high deductible plans. So that would be for non-union employees.
Okay.
Okay? Then there's an HSA fee of $1,600, and those are for the employees on the high deductible plan, town's responsible for that fee. We have the employer chair responsibility of $10,000 in both columns, and that is in case IRS decides to penalize us for having health insurance that's a little bit too expensive for our employees. We have, we have to fill out 10... We have, we have to fill out 1095Cs each year for the federal government, and there are some employees that get health insurance maybe through Mass Health, and we're penalized for those employees. So we always put $10,000 in there just in case. Okay?
And the Finance Committee?
Yep. It's been in there since they started penalizing towns. The first time we got a penalty, it was like 1.3 million, and we were able to get it down to 6,000. And we just got a penalty for 13,000, and we haven't gotten the response back yet from that, but we're hoping that will be reduced. Okay?
That's too bad.
So overall, the benefits are increasing about 1.6%. Is that about right?
I don't know the percentage, but whatever the number is at the bottom.
Yep.
I didn't do the percentages.
From 5.969 to, no, they went down.
No.
Wait, pardon. From 5.76 to 5.87, gone up about $100,000. Correct?
You have to do after-allocation to after-allocation, so a 9.7 to 9.9. So they went up.
I'm just looking at the benefits, the 5100.
Oh, 51, okay.
The insurance. It's about 100.
Yep.
Okay.
108,000. Then we have Medicare at 557,000, after allocations of $21,280. We have an after-allocation budget of $535,720. We have no miscellaneous pensions anymore, OPEB. The non-allocation column is 1.5 million, after our allocations of $52,368. We have an after-allocation amount of $1,447,632. Settlement for salary accounts, $75,000 in both columns. We had $160,000 last year because of the department head salary adjustments. Usually, we keep it about 65,000, but because someone is retiring and it's going to cost us a significant amount, I raised it to $10,000 to make sure that if anyone else comes forward, there's enough to cover any buyouts we have. Other administration fees, the no allocation column and after is $58,350. And this is $200 for FSA for new employees, $8,150 for, yeah, $8,150 for our OPEB actuary study that happens every two years. And I included $50,000 for a health insurance consultant. In September, we have to stop looking at our health insurance plan designs, so I put that in the budget to hopefully cover the cost of the consultant. So we have a total budget of no allocation of $10,501,472. And after allocations, $9,953,168.
Okay. Questions?
I'm just going to bring you back up to 51770. You made a comment, and I think this, for me, it'll just connect a dot with.
Is that counter-retirement?
Yes. Which is what Torrenzio was saying. You made a comment that $43,000 is a payment out of, out of that. That is to the middlesex retirement. So annually, we're making one $43,000 payment.
Around $43,000. The very first one. The county retirement. So we, in middlesex retirement, we have an option. We can make one payment on July 1st, which is a reduced amount, or we can make two payments, one in July, one in November, or something like December. Two payments. And we've always budgeted for the two payments because it costs us more, and we take the difference between the two payments and the one payment. It's about $40,000, and we put towards our unfunded liability. We've been doing that as part of our financial policy, probably for at least five years. So that money could, we could go to middlesex retirement, or we could put it towards the stabilization fund if it's approved. But it is in the budget.
I'm sorry, did you state where that $43,000 value came from?
It's in our actuary report. It tells us, this is the amount if you paid the money on July 1st, and this is how much it would be if you made two payments.
It's the minimum payment?
It's the minimum payment.
Right.
So we could make more than that if we wanted to.
So you were going with that?
No, I'm now, now I'm a little bit more confused than maybe I was at the beginning. We make two payments.
We, so we budget for two.
We make one. And that gives us a savings of $43,000 a year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because I, I keep coming back to this stabilization fund and how we would fund it. So that's a potential source of a donate, of not, a contribution to that fund?
Mm-hmm.
That would then mitigate the rate increases that Torrenzio was referring to?
Hopefully over time, yes.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. And then the second comment that I wanted to come back to was, that you made, was 51754, the HSA contribution of $70,000. I believe I heard you say that that is for non-union, union employees only, which I took to mean that union employees cannot contribute, participate in the HSA.
Correct. They cannot participate in the high deductible plans. All of our high deductible plans come with an HSA. That was part of the PEC agreement, where we could not get the unions to negotiate with us to offer them the high deductible plans.
Okay, let me make sure I'm understanding that correctly. Our unionized employees cannot contribute, participate in a high deductible health plan?
Correct.
Under the current?
PEC agreement.
Under the current PEC agreement. That is something that could change?
If they're willing to negotiate with us, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeff, I'm John. Questions?
Mary, how much flexibility is in this number every year? It's growing by two and a half overall. This is an employee benefits appropriation. You've got, one, two, three, four, you've got five accounts, I guess you could say. If you see some flexibility in one, can you move it to the other?
With a line item transfer, we could, at the end of the year.
So, for example, the 51772 line benefits, if you saw a savings there, can you use it within that line for another obligation without a transfer?
The 51772?
Mm-hmm.
I would say yes.
Okay.
Is that right, Chair?
But otherwise, if you were to move that money around, you'd need a line item transfer.
Right. It has to stay within the 01914.
Understood. Okay. Overall, it seems like a large increase. Maybe it's not. Can you help us understand the scale?
Not with, not with health insurance. Health insurance, actually, when we looked at projections before, we had our rate saving meeting on Thursday, they were talking, some health plans, like Harvard Pilgrim Tops, were going up 16 to 18%. The West Suburban Health Group did a lot of analyzing of it and did a 5%, 5.2% overall. So some went up six, some went up two. But right now, our population with health insurance is half, almost half and half, half active and half retirees. So we, we save on the retirees because they're all individual plans, because they work with Medicare Part A and B. And we don't see the drastic changes that the active employees.
You're budgeted for just under $10 million for FY '21. We expended just over $9 million in FY '19. So over a period of two years, this employee benefits account is increasing by a million dollars. What's driving that?
Basically, health insurance. We always, for, in our health insurance budget, we always budget for an extra 10 family plans of the highest plan. That gives us the flexibility. If we have a lot of people come in, we seem to go in spurts. If the economy's good, we don't get a lot of people on, and companies around us start doing layoffs or downsizing, then employees tend to bring their spouses on, and it does cause a shift in the health insurance with them coming on our plan. So we, we try to plan for that. We never really know how many employees are going to be hired during the year, so we have to figure that in for things like Medicare and some of the different ones.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
The $10,000 that we have listed here.
For the employer shared responsibility?
Is there some way we can, we can work to get rid of that? I, I mean, I hate to see taxpayer money used for fines.
Well, we could get rid of it. Well, we could get rid of it, but if the IRS fines us, we have to pay it, usually within a very short window of time, usually like 14 days. So then we'd be looking for, if there's not enough money in the budget, doing a reserve fund transfer or line item transfer, something to cover that cost.
Well, can we do something so that we're not set up to get fined in the first place? What?
Well, the problem is, we don't know what employees are going out to the health connector. We only know the ones that are enrolled with us, but we don't know if Macaronian, who has his own company, is getting insurance through the, the health connector, but you're still eligible with us. So that's where the penalties come from, because we have no idea. Any penalty we get, we fight to the best of our ability.
So, because someone qualifies and doesn't take it, you get penalized. The town gets penalized.
It's a very, it's a government tax.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like that.
The whole 1095 process is cumbersome, takes a good month for us to even prepare the 1095s. And you never know what you're going to get for penalties, or what year you're going to get them. They don't even come on a regular basis. They're working on, I think, 2017 right now.
It's called the 1095.
I think we should talk to our state representative about this.
Well, this would be federal.
Federal.
This is a federal.
But wouldn't she have the contacts, though, to help us?
Well, I think if we had a direct line to Mr. Trump, maybe we could say, you know, kill the 1095s altogether.
Well.
Because even when you bring them to your tax accountant, they say, "Oh, look, you got a pretty piece of paper," and that's all they do with it.
I mean, we, we're only one community. That means other communities are getting penalized, too. And that's just not right.
But they, they did do away with the Cadillac tax. That was a tax that we, we were going to be assessed with this year. So they did abolish that. So if we have to pay a small penalty, penalty compared to the Cadillac tax, we're still better off.
Still, still, it's bothersome, you know? People are paying their taxes, and it's going for a fine that we really shouldn't be charged for. I mean, you know, I would think that some accounting reporting of, you know, these are the employees, and they've, we could prove they've got their own, and we shouldn't be charged. That's absurd. That's just not right to do to the taxpayers.
There isn't a motion coming up, right?
Yeah.
Call your attention to the trust you have.
But I, I question, who would we talk to, Jeff, about this?
Congressman, Congresswoman Clark.
Can we, can you put that on there?
Shall I put her on your next agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to talk to her about that. That's just not right for the taxpayers to be hit with that every year, for goodness sakes.
And we don't get hit every year. It all, it all depends.
Yeah. But it's not, it's just not, I mean, in today's modern age, you can't prove and show who's, as long as they're insured, that's the only, the only thing they should be concerned about.
Correct.
It's really, it should be illegal, honestly. I don't like it.
All right.
Would you like a motion on that, sir?
I don't like doing the 1095C because they're, like I said, pretty much a useless piece of paper, but we are required to do them.
Yeah.
And they're very time-consuming.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mary, just because you're the fount of all knowledge, how many employees are unionized and therefore not able to participate in the HD, HDP, high deductible health plan?
Most of our employees are unionized, except for town hall, the town departments, except for DPW employees.
So the vast majority?
The vast majority.
Great.
School admin isn't either, but.
Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
I would like to make a motion to improve the employee benefits budget as prepared by Ms. Booska, totaling $9,953,168, shown under the after allocations line item.
Second?
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome. So the pink piece of paper that you have in front of you is the new debt budget that shows the reduction in the amount due for the police station. So the original amount for the police station was $459,075, and for FY '21 is now $417,511. So that was the result of the refunding bonds that you sold, that we sold last week.
Okay.
Okay. So the new benefits, debt budget is $3,010,544. We'll round that up.
This is the first time you're presenting this budget to us?
No. I did the, really?
No, I'm asking.
No. I did the debt budget when I did the treasurer-collector budget.
Right.
Probably February.
Right.
And then we sold the bonds.
Right.
Where we saved about $40,000 a year. So this new budget reflects the new debt schedule for the police station.
Yeah. Okay.
I only have one question. Tina, you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Mary, you're showing the, the total obligation at just over $3 million.
Mm-hmm.
There's another SBAB reimbursement of $951,513. You don't show that as a, an offset. Is that because that's shown as revenue somewhere else?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And can you explain the rates for the various bonds? Is it because they're different years?
Different years. We borrowed the, depended how large the bond was, how much, usually the size of the bond issue sometimes drives the rates. Also, what's going on in the market, the time of year.
I have a quick question for you from, I should have asked Torrenzio when he was here. When is the next chance we'll get to seek a change in our bond rating? How often is that?
Usually, whenever we do a borrowing. So if any of those projects that we presented last Wednesday are approved, then we'd probably get another bond reading. I'm not sure if we'd get it for the water treatment plant, because that's through the MWPAT.
Right.
So we go off the state's bond reading for that. What if we do sidewalks or water mains, the school? Then.
Okay.
You mean, the entire process? We went through about a month ago with Torrenzio on the call with SBP. We'd go through that entire process again?
Yes.
Any questions, Jeff?
No.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
A motion to approve the submitted FY '21 debt service budget, $3,010,544.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Alls in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Next up, we've got the Community Farm Committee here. Come on up and tell us what's going on.
That's Westland, 103 Norfolk Street, Chair of the Committee, the Holliston Community Advisory Committee, Farm.
Can you pull the mic up a little so folks can hear back?
Yeah, I don't project. Okay. Do I need to repeat that, or we're good?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Jeff, did you get copies of these, or? I know you, you reviewed it. Okay.
I emailed it out.
Okay. Because I didn't make any copies, because my printer was a little crazy. But I'll just, sorry, I usually bring them, too, this time.
That's all right.
Okay. So I was just going to go through the status of the site and some things about where we're at with the plans, and talk about some funding and things like that. So let me just make light work of it, because it's been a long night for you guys already.
That's all right.
So just quickly, overview, the conservation restriction has been going back and forth for edits. We had a third party review it, which was very helpful, so we've cleaned it up a lot, and I resubmitted it to Ryan Clapp, and I think it's just almost ready for somebody to take it and hopefully adopt it. That's been in work since, for, the greenhouse, we, we have that ready to go. We're, we're good, we have to do spring preparation to get it planting. I'll kind of move it around the Parks and Rec. We have a spring class scheduled. We have 14 kids signed up so far. So last year, there were five. So that's looking good, and that's through Parks and Rec. Community garden plots are all ready to go, and we'll talk about that with my one request. The field is a work in process. We had lots of manure delivered. We're.
Was that donated?
The manure?
Yeah.
Yes, Dave Dubin, Willowbrook Farm.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow, that was awful nice of them.
I would do a letter, but I don't know the amount of, what it's equivalent to, all the piles of manure.
It's so funny you say that, 'cause I was up there on the trail and I'm like, where did their piles of manure go?
Jeff, we should send a.
Over on Rogers Road.
Yeah, if you give, get me the information, I can create a letter. Thanks.
Oh, okay.
That might be the first time you write such a letter.
Yeah.
Thank you for the manure.
That's a lot of.
Yes.
It's a lot of manure.
That's a lot of money that they donated.
Yeah, and to take the time to bring it over. Yeah.
We could go on and on. It is getting a little late. You're right, we should probably move on.
Getting loopy. On the farm note, Upswing Farm has had to relocate because of the purchase of the property and they, we agreed to let them put a CSA pickup site at the community farm, which would be great 'cause more people will find out where the community farm is. So they're gonna have their trailer there for pickup on one day a week. And kinda, they promised to kind of help with, really gonna help with spreading the manure, actually, 'cause they have the equipment. And we're thinking of running some workshops. We have a high school student who's been built a composting bin and he wanted to do some composting workshops, you know, partner with me. So, so we've got some things planned for this season coming up. Right. So that's where we're at with, classes starting, all that good stuff. So, but the, the projections for where we're at, I think last time I came was in the fall and we talked about where we're at with making the property usable and safe. And the house is still a work in progress 'cause Mark Delker was delayed. He's full out with another job right now, so. And I, it froze solid in December, so excavation couldn't be done then. So we're waiting on that to start, which is excavation behind the house to do the structural repair, install the handicap access door in the rear of the house and I don't know, support beams to go inside for the structural support of the main floor. So that's still planned, it's just hasn't begun yet. We talked about improving the signage and I did go and get a quote and an estimate, but the sign to be like the other town property signs. The cost of that is $3,000, $3,700. That's reusing the pillars that are there, which we would help, you know, turn to make it so that you can see it from both sides of the road approaching. And so we're trying to figure out how to fund that. I still need to talk to Tom about posting signs on the property, but that's my action.
For the spring.
Mm-hmm. And then we talked about a sign on Route 16 to say to Holliston Community Farms, so I need to ask the highway department about that.
Whitney, Whitney and Washington, is that where it was gonna go?
Yes, yeah.
Chris, real quick on Upswing. Is it, would it be available for other to, other farms in our community if they wanted to put their CSA shares at the community farm? Would it allow that?
You mean shares or the pickup? I mean, I guess this was just a situation where they needed to find an alternate spot because most of their customers are.
On that side of town.
Or Holliston and Ashland, I guess, or Franklin. Their other spot's gonna be in Franklin. They have a lot of customers that are in Holliston and then they were trying to figure out a local central spot.
But he wouldn't, he wouldn't rule it out?
No, he wouldn't.
Okay, good.
Are local farmers gonna be able to grow on the community farm if they needed more space in, in time or?
The soil is not ready to do that, but I think we can, I think we have to consider the options in the future. I think of, like, what are we gonna do with the property? Are we gonna have somebody farm it? Are we gonna have a caretaker? Are we gonna just use the house for renting out and, you know, expand and make a big kitchen?
I, I ask because right now you allow residents to farm a plot. And I thought that, um, you know, with the, with the various farmers in town that when the soil is, is ready, that that might be something nice to do for them.
Yep.
As community people, that if they wanted to use a half acre or quarter acre or something and they would pay a fee.
Right.
So that you could raise some money.
We did a trial of that last year, but the water usage is a question and how you, you would have to like split off a meter or something like that or have them somehow account for the water. A well, right. So that's the difficult part because the field is big. And getting the water out there is also a problem.
Do a well.
Yeah.
To support all the activities of the farm.
But, yeah.
I think, I think it really costs that much.
No, there's, uh, it's, it's not.
It's capped, though.
It's capped and the pump is broken and stuff like that. It's not, no longer usable. It's also by the septic? No.
Well, no, that's why the septic was changed to get the septic away from it. So now it could be tested and possibly used. We haven't vested in it yet, but.
That, that, I think that's a, really should be a priority to test that by now.
Yeah.
Do you have town water?
Yeah, it's hooked up to town water.
But if you had your own well, you know, it would be so much better for irrigating the fields.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, when you go large-scale using the town waters.
Yeah.
Not easy to get, to distribute. And yeah, a well would make more sense.
As the soil's being worked on, you know, in the meantime, the well could be looked at. Maybe they could be ready at the same time.
Right, right.
Agreed.
Oh. Couldn't look at that.
I would try to make that a priority.
Okay. All right. Yeah, the other thing is we have a very functional septic system, so we were trying to figure out how to use the house too. And that would also involve, well, you toured the house, so.
Yeah.
Bathroom remodeled to make it accessible for the public.
Right.
So, yeah. So we have, if we did a well, that would fund the, that would, you know, be for the planting and then the town water for the house. Yeah.
Well, it's all about sustainability, right?
Right, right.
Chris, earlier tonight, Mr. Ritter informed, um, folks that the town's new facility coordinator is starting, is it from next week or?
March 16th.
So resource for you to think of if you have any kind of facility issues you want him to review and give you some advice on, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
The resource of the town.
You can get his.
They're not on the victory tour, are they?
No.
But you can get his contact.
Be advised. James Keast.
Just reach out to me.
Yeah, okay. All right. That might be a great resource.
Be acquainted with the facility.
Yeah, yeah, come see the site.
He can help out, you know, facilitate things for you to help you.
Okay.
Which helps the community.
Right.
Whether it be the water well or the building that's gonna, you know, the house that's gonna have classrooms, whatever, may have some suggestions.
Right. Yeah, yeah, I think the important thing is to get the house utilized because the septic's not being used yet and I think we really wanna start using it.
Well, once the house is utilized, then you have some access to revenue.
Exactly.
That's the plan.
More so than the, the plots are limited revenue and.
Right.
You know, the field is still, you know, needing maintenance.
Chris, I might be cheating a little bit, but unless it's up ahead, have you had a conversation with Frank Chamberlain?
I am prepared to talk about that, but I was in, I was in the funding section.
Don't make it cheap.
It's okay, no. I mean, that's the, the thing we're doing is trying to, you know, develop the vision for the property. So we were talking to a woman about a preschool nature immersive. She's, she's trying to figure out how to, how to do that because just on her own, she wants to partner with somebody and put her in contact with Parks and Rec. That might be a good, good avenue. But again, we have to make the house a little more usable. But her vision was like, Tangerini's has a nature immersive preschool and they have a composting toilet, you know. And they don't usually use the facilities. They run out of a yurt with a wood stove. So, very basic, 'cause you, the plan is to be outside most of the time.
Right.
But, so. And then, of course, have meetings there, right? But that, that comes down to the whole question of the kitchen. To have a commercial kitchen or not, feasibility of it, the need of it is questionable. We've done surveys and so we're thinking more of a kitchen so that you can have events there, like meetings, so you can just serve something out of the kitchen, not a fully equipped commercial, but we're.
Are you thinking within the footprint of the existing kitchen or?
Uh, within the footprint of the house, maybe into another bedroom. You know, that all depends on the vision of the house too. Are you gonna have somebody living there or can we just use the house and expand into the rooms so that, you know, you can use the bedrooms as additional space for a kitchen? So there's this master plan, right, that has to come together for the house and it depends on what we wanna do with it.
Right.
So.
The porch is not on slab, is it?
The, yes, it is. There's a back porch, it's on a slab.
So you could put the kitchen that way too?
Yep.
We think that might end up being like a snack bar, just a serving area to go out to a patio area in that grassy spot out there.
Yeah.
Take a couple of trees down. But that would be.
Oh, put a door out to the.
Yeah, door, sliding window for a snack bar operation. But it would also expand the kitchen footprint.
So you'd break down the wall between, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause you could also put a bunch of prep tables there too to serve as counters and slash prep tables, right?
It's nice and level there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, no, it's a good room. There, there are a lot of things that you could do, it's just a matter of what to do. I think we're gonna have somebody too that sells commercial kitchen equipment come look and see, what do you think? So.
Janie Fisher?
Yes, I think that's who. So, all right. Because basically we wanna make it all-season access. It pretty much shuts down for the winter, you know, unless you wanna go walk there, right? That's, it's outdoor. And then we wanna generate some revenue from it, but to generate revenue, you have to be able to use it. People have to be able to have facilities there. So that's the quandary. And then you need somebody to take care of it, right? A manager, property manager of sorts or caretaker. If you have a commercial kitchen, you need somebody to part-time manage that and make sure the checklist is complete, right? Keep it clean for the board of health. So that's another overhead of, of that. So that's why, but a minimal caretaker would be a little different.
You're looking at the part-time caretaker not as a town employee, but as in exchange for room and, well, not even board, but.
Right, that, like, if you did it like the Holliston Historical Society, they, that's for room and board, correct? Am I, I don't know.
I don't know that, actually.
I think there's sort of a handshake there.
Some kind of arrangement, yeah.
But to teens, I don't see this being a full-time.
No, it's not full-time. Not full-time. I don't know about town employee part, but somehow funded.
It would be paid by the town. They'd be paid by some other agreement between the farm and the individual.
So, yeah, and that person would have to be able to oversee the field. Like, they'd have to have expertise in farms, right? So. But, so that's a conversation that needs to be had. And then, so we, I think we know what we need to do to make the house usable more so. And then funding is coming into question. So we, we've had so many donations in kind. We've had the septic. We've had people give time and fuel and hours and, you know, labor. That adds up to a tremendous amount of money. The structural repairs on the house are $50-plus thousand, you know. The greenhouse was $20,000 that was donated and the planting. So we've had a lot of people contribute a lot to this property and we wanna see it go somewhere. We've done fundraising. The problem with fundraising is we're dependent on triple E, weather, limited facilities. So we raised $600 to $1,000 per event. And you're talking putting in a well or making the well usable, putting in a bathroom, you know, keeping the house up, that's, that's a lot of money that can't be really sustained with fundraising. So we're trying to figure out other forms of funding. So Dennis and Jim did go to the CPC meeting and they did speak with Frank. I was out of town. Frank and folks, Chris by deck. It was well-received of, they just gave us basically a summary of this update of what's going on at the farm. CPC funds can't be used for the house, for the site, because it's not a historical house. But they can be used, applied to the recreational, outdoor aspect of the property if they're seen to be within the scope of preserving that because it was acquired with CPC funds. So there might be some things that we can, I could do the application, right, which is a, to make sure that it falls within that matrix on the CPC form of funds. Like, maybe the sign, right? We could get the sign funded, the $3,700 for the town sign. But I can't, unless there's something to do, to be done with the field or their greenhouse or the outside property, that's what the CPC funds could be obtained for, if approved. So.
Like a well?
A well, perhaps. If it's, if it applies to.
On the eye of the beholder.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, right. It's how you position things, right? So that's true, 'cause if it's for the outside.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Gotta look at that matrix.
You don't yet have a master plan.
We've, we've drawn out master plans of, you know, the layout of the property and we've talked about what we can do with the house.
Okay.
Right, but we don't have any official plans drawn.
Okay. And the community farm is not a part of Holliston's master plan?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, never mind then. I was just thinking of the land use grant.
Nope.
The $750,000 land use grant that is out there at the federal level, I think. But you have to have a master plan, so moving on.
And we're not part of the town master plan.
To the extent you or your committee can mobilize some ideas for external recreational improvements of the property, be advised, I would try to get on the CPC's upcoming agenda. They, they, they meet once a month, I think?
Yeah.
Sometimes?
Yeah.
Maybe less frequently other times, but, you know, before you know it, we'll be at town meeting, so you may wanna try to get a concept in writing to them to see if you can get some access to funding at the spring town meeting.
We're about a month away from closing, I mean, from publishing the warrant.
Yeah, so you get the idea.
Yeah, I think the application was January for CPC, so I'll, I'll try it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the point.
Right.
Throw something together.
There's a potential for October also.
Yep.
Okay.
Keep at it.
So the other thing was the request for a revolving account, 'cause I don't know how things work at the town level of budgeting and all that. But if we turn over the garden plot income to the, you know, be a revolving account with the town, 'cause right now it's the friends of, but that's, I think it would be better if it went to an account here and then the water and.
There currently is no revolving account.
There is not?
No.
No. So.
She's asking if.
I'm asking to create one, though, for that purpose. The town gets the garden plot rentals and, you know, there's the. Bless you.
Bless you.
Such a revolving account would have to be approved by town meeting, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
So we'd have to put it in the warrant.
Okay.
So if you wanna give Mr. Ritter an email and ask him if we can put it in the warrant.
Okay.
Yep.
Pull it off.
Sure. Yeah. It's a process. That's what I was trying to figure out, what we need to do. Okay, all right.
Any special language on that, Sharon?
It has to, well, we've, we've got the language for all the other revolving accounts, It has to... Well, we've got the language for all the other revolving accounts, so we would just kind of...
We just insert it into that article.
Appropriately for what the funds... What the monies are that are coming into it and what the monies can be spent on.
Okay.
Okay. So similar to the outcome?
How much money are we talking about?
The income, if you have ten plots, you get five hundred dollars rate of rental, and then, you know, it's... I don't know. You know, the...
There'll be eventually, I would think.
Yeah. There'll be other... That's a minimum of that, and then you have... I had a... I had a sheet that I had ready for the FinCom to talk to them about stuff.
But I think you're right to put it through the revolving account, if that makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, right now they're ten, but they're expandable, and there are other things that can go on.
And the Parks and Rec is collecting the fees for the programming that they're doing here in the community farm.
We don't get any, right. So, yeah, we can't... We can't count any of that tuition from the Parks and Rec class. That goes to them. So, yep.
They're not sharing with you?
No.
You're letting them use the facility?
Well, yeah. I don't know. I think it's good just to get them there, right, to use it, but no.
Yeah, it's been nice. Token, you know?
Yeah.
When you're just getting started, everything nice.
Yeah.
A little bit?
They could put it into our revolving account. Because it's sixty-dollar tuition per kid, so, right there.
Yeah, it does. A couple hundred dollars, okay.
I know. It'll add up soon, but, you know, this is... It's a farm, right?
Yeah.
So... And I think that was it. Oh, we have the Easter egg hunt that we're planning on the April 5th, Sunday, weather permitting. The police station has the permit. We've planted some perennials, and we're going to do that for fundraising, and workshops are planned, so I think...
Great.
Yeah. We're just getting ready for the spring.
Excellent.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, we've got the police department. And they're going to talk about their budget with us. And thank you for...
Thanks for waiting.
Meeting with us individually and explaining it all to us. I think that was very helpful.
Well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to present the FY20 budget on behalf of the police department. As a police chief, it's my responsibility to provide a safe environment for those who live, work, and visit the town of Holliston. In order to achieve this tremendous task, we constantly seek ways to improve our police department by maintaining high standards and providing the highest level of police service as possible. I'd be remiss if I didn't begin by acknowledging the excellent work that is performed day in and day out by the men and women of the police department. The Holliston community is very fortunate to have such a remarkable group of police officers whose integrity, professionalism, loyalty, and pride seek to protect and serve the Holliston community each and every day. I am fortunate enough to lead that great team. The budget proposal that has been submitted for your review aims to accomplish our goals in the most effective and efficient way possible. Our community-based policing and problem-solving approach to public safety is an effort to achieve greater levels of efficiency and effectiveness. The police department budget that we put forth takes into account many facets: the need of the expect... The needs and expectations of the Holliston community, officer safety and wellness, the growing complexity of the law enforcement profession as a whole, and the fiduciary responsibility of municipal government. The patrol division is a backbone of the Hollis Police Department as they are available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. The patrol division has a responsibility of being the first responders to all calls for service in the town. Is our hope that the documents provided to you via email to the board present a transparent representation of our police department and the many functions that we serve. Once again, I'd like to thank the board for allowing us to present the FY20 budget and look forward to answering any questions that you might have. So I sent all of the documents via email, and met with each of you individually. Those numbers since we first met back in January have come down, and those came down based on conversations that we had with individual members of the board and with the finance committee. I think before we present the numbers, there's just a couple of milestones and initiatives that I think are worthy of noting before we get into some of the numbers. In FY20, we answered seventeen... Over seventeen thousand calls for service. Those are either calls for service into the police station or self-initiated calls by In FY20, we also hired four new police officers. This is a total of nine new officers in just two years. We established a police motorcycle program. We expanded our detective division. We established a dual-purpose K-9 program that serves both the patrol and narcotics function. We also initiated the Middlesex County Critical Incident Management System, which helps to track fatal and non-fatal opioid overdoses across Middlesex County. We helped to formulate a traffic safety advisory committee. We expanded our firearms training unit. We participated in our annual citizens' police academy, our junior police academy, participated in Toys for Tots, fill the cruiser event during the holiday season. We hand the popsicles out to kids on the last day of school. We provided pumpkin patrol for Halloween events and provided backpacks, school supplies to kids going back to school. We also participated in a proactive outreach initiative to help combat the opioid epidemic. So those are just, in addition to the seventeen thousand calls for service that we respond to and/or initiate, those are just some of the community projects and initiatives that we've taken place. Needless to say, it's been a busy couple of years. I'll defer to the board however you want me to go into this. If you want to ask individual questions or jump into numbers...
Tina?
Oh, well, I would just say to those listening that I had the privilege of listening to Chief Stone and his lieutenants present his budget and all the documents he's brought here tonight and forwarded in preparation for this meeting. And as a result of the thorough work that Chief Stone and his team have done, I have very, very few questions. I think we all should be very proud of our police department. This is one touch point of the quality of work that comes out of the police department, and you have a very complex budget. You've had tremendous change, as you alluded to, just in the hiring of the nine officers in two years. You have a very complex organization. You have twenty-four-seven involvement in town activities and duties, so the fact that I personally don't have really any comments speaks to the level of detail you put into your presentation, which I want to thank you for and really commend you for. I do have a couple of questions, but I'll wait.
No, go ahead.
Well, so did you want to present the budget itself? That's what we've seen sort of by practice with each budget coming before the board, kind of going through the line items and highlighting, you know, particular things you want to point out. We obviously have a copy of it, but...
Sure. Again, I just... I would defer to credit to the men and women who are working out there, you know, twenty-four hours, seven days a week. They're the ones that really do the work and are the ones that are responding to the homes and businesses that we have, so I give them all the... Most of the credit, no.
Lieutenant Thompson would agree with that statement or not?
So the first section, I guess I'll just break it down by personal services, is to the extent that we could, we tried to provide a one percent guideline given by the finance committee. Given just the collective bargain agreement that's in place currently, we end up with a two-point-four-six... Excuse me, two-point-four-six percent increase, and that has a lot to do with some of the younger officers at getting the one percent cost of living increase in addition to the steps and increases that they're available to in the contract. So instead of just getting the flat increase, you have some getting the COLA as well as the different steps, so that's why it's above that one percent. There were several items in there that were level funded, but also that were on the one percent guideline. The second area in purchase services, that was up by eleven percent, and the reason being, going line by line, the biggest one was building and grounds maintenance. That shows an increase of thirty-one point eight percent, or five thousand dollars. And the reason for that is I talked with the town accountant and with members of the board, as well as my administrative assistant, and we found that some of the items that we're paying now are out of, I would say, incorrect line items, so we tried to move them into where building and grounds maintenance. Some of those are our well power, our generator maintenance fees, our elevator fees, our boil inspection fees. Those are all being paid out of professional services right now, so we moved them to building grounds, which everybody agreed that was more appropriate. So the reason for that increase is partly because we're taking it from one section of the budget and putting it into another. We are also seeing additional calls in our HVAC, air conditioning and heating system. So the building is ten years old. It's a wonderful building, however, we are approaching, you know, a ten-year shelf life where we're starting to see more calls for service in HVAC. Professional services did go up by fourteen percent, or twenty-four hundred dollars, two-thousand-four-hundred-and-twelve dollars. And part of that is our in-service instructor fees, so we have... Majority of our in-service training is done in-house by our own officers. They're all trained at a certain level in order to teach other department members and other agencies. However, we do outsource some of the training, and when we have to pay those instructors, we pay that out of professional services. We also added some funding for K-9 medical services, obviously hopefully not to use that, but should an incident happen or occur to K-9 Mattis, we want to be able to take care of him medically, should that arise. And the only other increase would be annual software licensing fees that we added. About two years ago, we added a new scheduling software system that basically calculates all time off, all time off requested, hours worked, details worked, and it's all in the system, and I credit Lieutenant Thompson for implementing that. But it's a transparent, push-of-a-button program where you can see how much overtime's worked, how much time off is taken, and it really helps us budgeting-wise with the schedule. So those are some of the programs that we implemented that now require software licensing. Under supplies and materials, the only increase in that line is office supplies, and that's a sixteen percent increase, or five hundred dollars, and that line hasn't been touched or increased in several years. And with a twenty-four hours, seven days a week operation, we're just running a little short in the office supply lines, in particular with toner for our printers and so forth, the amount of reports we're having to send down to court. And then under other expenses, professional development was up by twelve point four percent and/or an increase of two-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars. That's an increase of, again, twelve percent, but it's... A lot of it is for the development and training of our officers. With bringing on nine new officers, it's an excellent opportunity to bring new face and new blood to the department. However, it comes with a challenge where these officers are new, and they don't have the training and experience that some of our veteran officers do, so the increase of twenty-two hundred dollars is hopefully to provide that training to them and bring them up to the level that most of us are at. So the overall increase comes in at two-point-eight-nine percent, and again, that's looking at just about every line item as best we can in trying to see where we can save and where we can combine efforts and so forth.
Any questions, Mr. Cronin?
Just two questions, Matt. I met with you several weeks ago. It sounds like there's been some adjustments. If I recall correctly, part of your FY20 budget included the... This year's budget include the add of a new police officer for, among other things, traffic enforcement? Can you talk a little bit about the benefit of that position, how it's directly impacted Holliston's ability to manage its traffic issues?
Sure. So specifically the traffic, we hired two new additional bodies in FY20. Unfortunately, with the state, the way the training and implementation of that, we started that process back in... As soon as town meeting approved it in May, we started the hiring process in July. We're now in March 2nd. Those officers are only in the eighth week of their training academy. So unfortunately, we were funded back in July, but it takes the process of screening, and I think it takes longer to get that quality officer, but in the long run, it's worth it. So we've had officers out there, extra shifts on the evening and on the day shifts, conducting solely traffic enforcement, and that's to target any type of moving violations. We've implemented a traffic enforcement car that's dedicated just to traffic, so if a shift has enough officers, we can put an officer out there for one hour, for four hours, for eight hours, dedicated just to traffic enforcement, and we leave that discretion up to the shift supervisor.
Are they out of their car during that time period, or are they in their vehicle?
During traffic enforcement? It depends on the weather, mostly in the vehicle. So they'll take traffic enforcement posts or recent complaints that we've had or area hot spot areas that we've heard complaints about.
They're looking for MVs and things like that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And we hope to expand on that with the motorcycle. Our motorcycle has been ordered. Our officers are...
You've got to be careful. Motorcycle's going to be in your neighborhood.
So we look to expand on the traffic enforcement efforts once that gets implemented in the spring.
My second question is, in your budget, do you have any capital items coming in this spring?
We do.
Did you want to talk about those, Chief?
I'm sorry, no, not in the spring, in the fall. Nothing in the spring.
Vehicles will come in the fall.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Nothing in the spring.
No uniform parts or anything like that?
No, we have just uniform line, uniform clothing, equipment line in the budget that we have.
That's all I have, Mr. Trim.
We're aware of all the improvements you've made since you became chief that are now reflective in your budget, but some of the residents might not be aware, so I was wondering if you could take a couple of minutes and kind of go through when you became chief and all the things that you've tried to improve upon, whether it be in the office with software or whether it be out in the field, just to kind of give the public an update, if you will.
Sure. So some of those highlights and milestones were just of FY20. So in FY... I took over in FY18 as the police chief, and the budget that we presented in FY18 added one additional body, which brought us up to twenty-three officers. The following year, FY19, we added different areas to the budget, including ammunition, training, professional development. We really tried to increase areas that we thought were in need of that. In FY20, we added two additional bodies to bring us up to twenty-four and twenty-five, and those bodies are in the academy right now and are estimated to graduate in June.
And then they'll be joining you in...
They'll be joining us in, yeah, June, and they go through another twelve-week field training. The only comparative... I don't think we've ever hired more than two officers, maybe per year, at least in my history. I can't recall, you know, a time. We've hired nine in the last just over two years. So we had the option early on, when I became chief, we immediately looked for transfer officers from other departments.
But some of those were replacing people who retired.
Correct. Correct, not new bodies.
I don't want people to think...
Yeah, no, no, no. Three, actually, additional bodies and six replacements. But the overall... The history of the department doesn't show more than about two per year.
That was quite a turnover of retirees.
Yeah, so it's been good, and I just go back to, you know, we had the option of taking on veteran officers, that first initial interview process where we were filling vacancies, and we took a hard look at it, and the easy decision would have been to take on lateral officers from other departments, save on training, save on time. However, there's always an issue, or there could be issues with that for a number of reasons. So we took the approach of hiring new officers, training them, spending a little bit more time, a little bit more money, but the quality of officers that we have on the road, half of which you probably wouldn't recognize at this point, is tremendous. The community that they deal with, the amount of calls, I mean, just just so we get alone, the lieutenant's phone was ringing off the hook, mine was as well, trying to get press releases out, trying to deal with incidents, big-scale incidents that we have in town that frankly, you know, doesn't get publicized all the time. Our officers do it without citizen complaints, without excessive force. The way they're able to de-escalate, it's a tribute to them and the training that they go through, so I think we've done a good job in trying to bring quality and retain quality to all officers here, so... But it's been a team effort. It's taken a lot of work, but I think we're starting to see some of the benefits of those decisions now, so...
Right. And you've added the motorcycle to the force, which really should be very helpful for safety with the rail trail.
Mm-hmm.
What is it, two-point-seven miles of rail trail we have?
We have six-point-seven.
Six-point-seven.
You're aware that we're doing...
Sorry. Wonder where I got two-point-seven from, anyway?
Some distance, some segment is two-point-seven.
Yeah, that's probably what it is. But, yeah, you know, and it's awful hard to reach people on that trail with a car, especially when you got people walking the other opposite way. So this motorbike should really, you know, help us get to people quicker.
Mm-hmm.
That might have had an incident where they hired or something, and it could potentially save lives, I think.
I think, yeah, the motorcycle, the traffic enforcement car, we've added an emergency response trailer, we've added an evening detective position, we've added a dual-purpose K-9 unit, we've implemented a software program to keep our scheduling. We've tried to hit all sorts of areas. In addition to, we achieved full accreditation, so under my administration, if you will, in October of seventeen, we had worked toward full accreditation. We received that about six months after becoming... That I became chief. The lieutenant's going now through every three years. The Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission comes in and basically reopens the books and looks at all your policies. They're coming in April and with a full accreditation coming in June, so not only are we doing it Holliston's way, we're following best practices across the straight, across the state, so to have the stamp of an accredited agency is remarkable.
Remarkable.
I give all that work to the lieutenant. I try to offer help, but it's a tremendous amount of work that Lieutenant Thompson and Lieutenant Demmon really put time and effort into, so...
That's great.
Will this be your first accreditation as chief?
No, this will be my second. So we achieved full accreditation October of seventeen.
Okay.
And every three years, so if we're awarded in June, we'll get the award October of twenty.
And your start date as chief was?
April 5th, 2017.
Okay.
Do you have a line item for a little party, should you get the... I think that's remarkable, though.
Mike Cassidy uses his friends with the fire department.
He's got a lot of gifts.
He's got, yeah. Ask Mike for the cake money.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Are you aware that there are trails? Shouldn't say that, never mind. Don't say that on camera.
Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the submitted police budget. Do you want to give the number, Matt, so we can record it?
Yes.
For FY21.
Be three million, one-hundred-and-five-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars. Three-one-zero-five-one-two-two.
Do we have a second?
Second?
All those in favor? I oppose. Motion carries.
Nice work, Matt. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
I would just add, I know it's getting late, the amount of grants, I haven't added them up yet, the amount of grants that we bring in each year, both state and federal, are remarkable, and we supplement our budget with those grants. I emailed Christina today about the traffic grid.
Good news?
It sounds like it will be. She doesn't have any answers yet, but I'm hopeful that we are. But we have different officers and different supervisors working on grants that we bring in to supplement this as well, so credit to them.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We got some board business to take care of. Jeff, you want to talk about a town meeting warrant?
Yeah, someone do a quick review of the warrant.
Yes, please.
I gave you a hard copy in front of you this evening.
It's just a rough copy, right?
This is the first draft of the warrant for the May 4th annual town meeting.
Yes.
As you know, Article D, we have to insert an article now into every annual town meeting for compensation for elected officials.
Okay.
That would include the Board of Assessors and the Select Board.
Okay.
The Board of Health does not receive any compensation.
All right.
And then Article E is the codification of the compensation for the town clerk for FY '21. Again, this is a work very much in progress. Between Mary and Sharon, we're checking these numbers to make sure that they're accurate. Article F is the retroactive compensation for the town clerk from September of 2019 until June 30th of 2020.
Right.
That you wanted to have in there. Article G is the 2020 managerial compensation adjustments. We think that number is $47,000. Again, this number has already been approved and appropriated. We just, this is a mechanical function of moving it from one account to another account.
Right. And so there's enough left over to cover the town clerk's salary?
Yes, well, her adjustment.
For her adjustment, exactly. That's what I'm getting at.
Yep.
Jeff, I don't understand why G is needed.
Well, I mean, we have two approaches. One, we can do a year-end transfer.
Mm-hmm.
Or two, we can put it into the, into the warrant. If the Finance Committee chooses not to do a year-end transfer, this is the safety net to get that funded.
Okay.
So if the Finance Committee chooses to do a year-end transfer...
We can take it out.
We can just bypass it, or, you know, defer action, whatever you want to call the language. Article I, Mary is working on this. Article G, we don't know of any at the moment, unpaid bills. Article J, I'm working with Sharon to find out what the total compensation is for the Chapter 90 funds. Article, the second Article J, this is the establish and authorize the revolving funds. Sharon says this can be removed, which I will do. Article K, this is the revolving fund spending limits, and we're talking about removing the town hall rental. That's a question mark, and the accident fee, which is $5,000, which no one seems to understand what it is, but it's been there forever. Article, I'm skipping over now to Article M, that's the budget, okay? FY '21 budget. Article O is the Community Preservation Committee appropriations. Sharon's getting that information for me. Article P, there are going to be several articles that I envision that are going to come in under Article P, that are in the back part of this warrant, that you'll see in a second, that are going to come in under the capital expenditures appropriation. So if you go to the back of your document, after the ballot question, we come to Article V. This is where it gets interesting for you, for the board. Article V, this is the same article that appeared in the draft warrant last year for sidewalk improvements and prioritization plan. And I have inserted here $40,000. This is where these series of articles are going to be important for me and for the board, because you need to prioritize what you want to have in a warrant.
Right.
I mean, you can't have everything you want.
Right.
But this is sort of a safety net for outstanding items that may appear in October, or even next April.
Right.
But...
Or May.
The water asset management plan is at $75,000.
We had talked about a water study, is that here? That would be a study for a new well?
It's not in here. We'll hear that once we give him the update on the scope of work that Sean's planning.
Okay, because...
Ben's here, I just want to, do you, I haven't talked to you in a while. In addition to the three prongs that Erica's preparing for more detail, we added a fourth, and that's to review water source data from, I think, the 2012 study.
Yep.
And it would look at availability of where we can find our next well and begin planning towards that.
We added it as a separate, basically a separate study, as opposed to expanding the scope of the initial of the water...
That is correct.
Yeah, it was actually recommended to me by Finance Committee Chair, that we should do that, to be prepared for the future.
It was actually embedded, I don't know if you knew this, Mark, but it was embedded as part of the three articles.
Yeah.
But when we met a couple weeks ago, I decided to draw it out as its own separate one, because it did, it was mentioned in the 2012 study. They were, they were just coming off bringing on the last well online, so everybody felt like we have it covered. But it's been 10 years or so, and I think, as Mr. Aronian pointed out, it's time to kind of start focusing on that next step, so. It'll be a fourth, it'll be a fourth article, Jeff, okay?
So if you can clarify for me, you're suggesting that I put in a separate article for a well studies site?
Correct.
Yes.
Well, water study.
Feasibility study, or whatever.
Looking at both Article W and Y, and I'm wondering why. There, one is, as I read that, one is the study to...
The water asset management plan update.
Mm-hmm. That's, there seems to be some redundancy there, if I'm not, if I'm reading it correctly.
Yep.
It looks to me like Article Y is more of a debt article, whereas Article W is more of a study article, so...
Well, W was originally, $75,000 was the original catch-all.
Mm-hmm.
So we should strike W.
Yeah.
And each of the articles should replicate, or be replicating, effectively, what we did in the fall, Jeff.
Mm-hmm.
To Tina's point, we had, well, I think we already did a water rate study.
Do we need a motion to strike that?
The water, yeah, Article X has already been done, I believe.
Yeah, that would need to come out.
So the water pipeline replacement, whatever we used in the fall, that should be the language for the water pipe, that's your $55 million. The DPW facility, that should be your own.
But we should have a motion to get rid of W, Article W, right?
It's not really even, I mean, not yet.
Okay, all right.
I'll take it out.
And V, V is the third prong, right? So you got V...
Sidewalk.
Yep, you got V, Y, Z.
Yep.
And then the new one will be whatever you give it.
Yeah.
With the well water.
And I hope to have some information from Erica Lottz by the end of the week on the sidewalk improvement study.
Okay.
That's the same thing we were...
Okay.
We'll get down.
I have it currently at $40,000.
Yeah, I'll talk to her about what she escapes from with.
Oh, it's good.
Okay, so DPW facilities feasibility study, $50,000, maintenance of the, and repair of the Charles River rail trail at $1,000, this is the same article as last year. We have the Central Street Fire Station easement agreement for the solar electric power on their, on their roof.
Mm-hmm.
These are the articles that I were referring to about moving probably to capital, the capital article, the dual-purpose trackless MT-7 tractor for the DPW, the video detection system for the town, town center improvements at 1750 Washington Street for ADA compliance, primarily.
Yes. And does that include improving the steps that corroded?
Yes, the whole front entranceway.
It's terrible.
Yep.
But I mean, the steps going down, too.
Yes, both, both, the masonry work will be also addressed.
Okay.
Article FF, the senior center improvements.
Yep.
Again, this article, we are asking for money from the state legislature on this, but there's no way of knowing if that's going to actually materialize.
And they might have it already in FY '20. They have that...
If I remember correctly, and I have to ask...
This is part of that $200,000.
Yeah, the $200,000 for the free cash, I believe we set aside and put it towards the building improvement fund, and it could be taken out of there. But I think that was the intent, I'd have to verify.
So I have a, I have a note here on this document that says transfer from free cash.
Big though.
Right?
But let us know for sure, because we'll take it out.
That isn't accurate, no, we keep that note...
Yeah, I believe that was the intention, that we wanted to do that.
Okay.
So let Jeff know.
So Article GG, wastewater treatment plant evaluation and repairs, library, Article HH.
Can you back up for a second?
Yep.
We already, I thought...
Yeah, I think that's already been authorized.
We authorized that two weeks ago, I thought.
But the bigger question...
No, I mean, this is the bigger...
Okay. The other question that Mary asked us to put into the warrant was the potential that we might have to do a debt exclusion to borrow money for the wastewater treatment plant. Do you remember that?
Hmm, I don't.
So the wastewater treatment plant's an, it's an $8 million project that's a little less than that.
Yeah, but this is a different, this is the, that's the water treatment plant. This is the one on Linden Street.
Yeah.
Okay, I, okay, I'm saying I don't see water treatment plant on your list of things.
I think we're all set with that one, because I asked Mary about that, and she said we're okay.
No, we haven't determined that. We are, we, when I talked to her about two weeks ago, she was asking us to put it into the warrant, and I told the Finance Committee we may need it. We weren't sure if we were going to do a debt exclusion on it, or if we were going to seek to have the, the cost paid for under the water fee.
Water fee, yeah.
Because the water department has, or DPW, has two projects coming off bond, or payment, if you will. They could fit the cost of the water treatment plant under their budget.
Okay.
It was going to be a little sketchy between '21 and '22, but she was, she was going to evaluate, should we still put a placeholder on the warrant to borrow as a debt override?
Yep.
Or evaluate the scheme of putting it under the Water Enterprise Fund?
The question I have, I remember Mary saying that, so I corroborate that. The question I have, and I think, based on the look on your face, Tina, you might have the same question I have, what did we approve in town meeting of you last year?
2018 it was.
We approved something, I don't, I don't remember the exact language, but we approved something about $8 million for wastewater treat, I don't remember, not wastewater, you mean, the water treatment plant. And I don't know exactly what we were, in the context of what you're saying, I don't remember what exactly...
About $600,000 or something like that.
No, there was an $8 million, there was an $8 million figure, I can look it up if you want me to get it.
I think it's annual town meeting of 2018, and there is an article that allows the town to...
I'll get it for you.
Yeah, so I think it's annual town meeting 2018.
Yeah.
This is a Mary question, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember Mary saying that, but that's, that was something I didn't really understand.
So Jeff, you'll have to check with Mary.
Oh, yeah, yep. Article HH is library repairs and improvements. This is to replace carpeting, an air handling unit, complete plaster work, and some interior painting.
Okay.
Again, probably will move to capital.
Right.
I'm struggling here with Article JJ, this is the Middlesex County Retirement System Stabilization Fund. We're still working on this.
Yep.
Article KK is the Host Community Agreement Stabilization Fund, again, still working on this. And then you get into the interesting stuff. These are the articles that I have not had time yet to draft or prepare, but, you know, there's a lot in this warrant, and there's a lot of money on the table. And, you know, I think that as soon as the board is in the position to start making some decisions about removing some of these placeholders, the easier my life will become, because, for example, the master plan update, we're nowhere near ready...
I think it can come off.
We're nowhere near ready for that at the moment, because we have, we have no numbers...
Take it out. Same with the strategic plan.
Yeah, I mean, that goes to October. It'll just keep on going until it gets funded eventually someday.
Sorry, but why can't we, why couldn't we use an article like that to consider what I think most towns do in this position, which is hire a consultant to come in to help draft the strategic plan?
Absolutely, you could, but, I mean, what I'm saying is that there's a lot of expense, a lot of money on the table here, and you need to prioritize what your priorities are. And when you put this against a new subtext system at the town hall, for instance, the subtext system wins, in my view.
Right.
Well, I'm wondering, this is a tough time to have a conversation about the articles that are actually in here at 9:15, after being here for a couple hours, just in terms of...
Agreed, agreed.
When do we get into the weeds on this stuff?
This will be on the agenda every week until May.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, call the herd.
Well, we took a few things off tonight.
Call the herd.
Call the herd, yeah.
We added a couple things.
Yeah, but we took off several.
Is the town hall septic, septic in here, Jeff?
It is here, at the back. Town Hall easement and installation of new subtext system.
Okay.
I have not had time yet to draft that language, but hopefully, next week, when you have this again, you'll have several more articles in front of you.
I have a, I have a question for you about that. We spoke with Chris earlier about the CPC, she said CPC is for blah, blah, blah. Would a septic system fit under CPC?
No, I don't, I don't see it, well, no, I don't think it would.
I don't think so.
No.
Renovate, update, historical property?
That's a maintenance issue, though, I think.
No, it's a failure. It's not a maintenance, it's, we got a failed system. I think Strombs will give you a letter to that effect.
He's stretching it.
Article E in 2018, that we're, that we're talking about, about the water treatment plan. I'm not, I don't, I can't speak to the legal ease of exactly what we approved.
Right, that's why Mary, Mary should, we should check that.
Yeah, that's the one that we're, that I, it might have just been, like, start the process, and then we have to do something additional, so I assume that's what's happening, but that's the one I'm interested in.
That's all I have on that, Mr. Chairman.
Great. We have some other board business to attend to tonight. Meeting minutes from December 16th, February 19th, February 10th, February 6th, September 12th, the minutes were in our file. Do we have a motion to approve?
We're not going to go by them, through them line by line?
I just read them all.
Move to approve the meeting minutes of December 16th, 2019, February 19th, 2020, February 10th, 2020, February 6th, 2020, and going back in time, September 12th, 2019.
Second.
And February 6th were executive session, so include that as well.
And I will amend the, the motion to add February 6th executive session meeting minutes with the note that they are to be approved and not released.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, thank you. There was a veterans' budget donation.
There's actually a veterans' budget, the Metro West, the Veterans Services Metro West District, which composes of Medway, Hopkinton, Holliston, Ashland. The budget number for Holliston has been reduced, actually, by $1,114.03 from FY '20.
Is that because of a donation?
That's because of a change in turnover in staff and personnel. The position is vacant, and has been vacant now for a while, and the Veterans District is actually reviewing whether or not the, the position needs to be filled. So for now, we want to reduce that number.
Do we have a motion?
I'm sorry, is this a motion to approve, excuse me, is this a motion to approve the veterans' budget?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
The total number? The total for the four towns?
Oh, for Holliston.
For Holliston, forty-two thousand, 41,239.27.
Is it fair to say that, given the Finance Committee Chair's concerns over this budget that he expressed at their last meeting, that this $1,114 decrease should satisfy those concerns?
I can't answer for the Chairman of the Finance Committee.
He had some concerns, and I think wanted some more discussion on the veterans' budget, but I cannot recall if it was because the, the amount was more than fiscal year '20, and that was his primary concern, or, in which case this reduction should be satisfactory?
It's less than the FY '20 budget.
I, I guess my question is, what were his concerns? Does anybody recall what they were? Because he did ask for more discussion on the veterans' budget, which...
I don't recall, I didn't hear him say anything about that.
The only thing I have in my notes is that there was confusion about how the agreement works, is the meeting that Jeff went to, the approval of budget, or can town meeting, does town meeting get a say on the budget? It was like more procedural questions.
Okay, so not the budget amount?
Okay. I don't have any notes about...
Do you want to make a motion barring the Finance Committees?
Yeah, I'm just looking for the dollar amount, so we can read it out. Here in the agenda packet, I'm just trying to find it, that's all. If anybody has it in front of them, that would be helpful.
Jeff just wrote it.
Forty-one thousand, two thirty-nine, twenty-seven.
And that's after subtracting this one thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Move to approve the veterans' budget as stated by Jeff Ritter.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion carries.
Before we move on, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a note. The Finance Committee Chairman released an updated schedule of events, budgets they will be looking at, given their matters last week involving the schedule. Jeff, the select board's budget was not presented at the February fourth meeting, and it doesn't look like he picked it up for any of the remaining dates between now and March thirty-first. If you want to talk to him about putting, putting the select board back into the queue for that. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have some donations, the Community Farm and Senior Center.
Move to accept the donation of four hundred and twenty-five dollars from the downtown Marigold project to the Community Farm.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion carries.
Move to accept the donation, I believe, to the Community Farm from the American Legion Post in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
And move to accept the donation from the Nutrition Program at Suparette in the amount of four hundred dollars to the Senior Center.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And thank you for, all of you, for donating and helping out. Much appreciated. And appointments, we have an appointment firefighter, EMT. Thomas Waschek to be appointed, and an on-call firefighter. And Arthur Fino. Do we have a motion?
No discussion. It's fine. Yep, move to accept Thomas Waschek as on-call firefighter, EMT, to the Holliston Fire Department.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion carries.
Move to accept Arthur Fino to be appointed, or move to appoint, rather, Arthur Fino as an EMT to the Holliston Fire Department.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And Eric Woodhouse. Do we have a motion?
Move to accept Eric Woodhouse as appointee to the Blair Square Committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. motion carries. Thank you. We have a Chapter ninety reimbursement request, Mr. Cronin. This work is going to be to reimburse for the culvert at Westfield Drive.
Can you speak into me?
Yep, can we have a motion?
Oh, motion to.
Chapter ninety reimbursement.
Do you have language on this, Jeff?
I don't have any information on it, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Mr. Smith from the Highway Department has sent over a request for reimbursement for work done on the culvert at Westfield Drive.
No mention of the dollar amount.
Copy is in the backup file.
The dollar amount is, if I'm reading this correctly here, it's two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents, which totals the expenditures for the Westfield Drive culvert replacement. And this is approved at a, was approved by Massiokeeter, reimbursement rate one hundred percent for up to three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So again, the approved expenditures totaled two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents.
Is that a motion?
Move to approve.
The reimbursement.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. motion carries. Thank you. Open water hearing.
So the water rate hearing was posted and advertised and noticed and was scheduled for last Monday. Obviously, we couldn't have our meeting last Monday because of the technology flaw that occurred, not with only Holliston, but with about twenty-five thousand other communities throughout the United States. But we had to post, we had to cancel that meeting. So this water rate hearing, we could use a motion to continue the hearing until a later date.
Yeah, I got a message from Vin, from the Finance Committee, with an opinion that the water rate should be raised this year to help.
That's nice.
Pay for some costs associated with the, with the water infrastructure and so forth. So that's something to consider.
Yep.
I'd welcome him at the rate hearing.
Yes, absolutely. Well, he wasn't able to be here tonight, so he's letting.
We don't have a rate hearing.
I know.
Come on down. Water's warm.
You know, if I get information, I.
Sure. No, I'm big.
Procedurally, we are required to have a water rate hearing.
Correct.
One hundred and twenty days of the start of the fiscal year, so we're right up against that. I know Sean Reese, I spoke to him, and he would like to hold on rate adjustments. We can still hold the hearing. I think we're actually now past the one hundred and twenty days, but that is not our issue in that we planned to do it last week and couldn't. But I know Sean Reese's comments, as he expressed them to me, would be to hold on any decision to actually change the rates at this time until the study that we funded at fall town meeting is completed and submitted. So it would just be, to Vin's point, we would just be having the hearing to take public comment.
Correct.
We would not be making a decision at this time to adjust the rates, so.
Keep it on the schedule, then?
Absolutely. We're going to, we're going to have the continued hearing at a later date.
Okay.
As soon as we can.
Do you need a motion on that?
I would like it, yes.
Move to continue the water rate hearing until, as posted on.
Till a date certain?
Yep.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Just for the record, I want to see the way water rates go down. I'll explain that when we have our hearing.
Okay, well, Vin will be here, I'm sure.
Yeah.
And that'll be good to discuss it, you know?
We collect too much money.
MVP and RFP.
So, Mr. Chairman, as you know, the town has been allocated about a hundred thousand dollars to implement the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program.
Yes.
Tina and I and staff met on Wednesday of last week. And thank you for the good works of Chris Mayo, again, our Technology Director, who I've asked him to find out what other communities have done in terms of the RFP. As you may recall, we used Kim Lundgren last summer.
Yeah.
To do some visioning exercises. We are not required to go out to seek an RFP on this process because she's already pre-qualified. However, I think it's just good public policy and good public relations that we get, and also opportunity to get input from other consulting firms that are pre-qualified, just as a process. So this is kind of a formal, well, not a formality, but it's a, it's a process that we're going to get input with. So the document is in front of you, and if you, if you approve it tonight, we'll issue it tomorrow, and we'll get rolling on this.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the RFP for the consultant for the MVP program, as written.
Do we have a second, Jeff? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have a resignation of the Parks Committee. Mr. Keast was a member. Now he's being appointed as, as the facilities manager position, and he was required to resign. I was unclear about that. I didn't know that you couldn't be an employee and be, is it because it's an elected position?
No, it's perfectly acceptable. I mean, you can serve as an elected appoint, elected official and a employee of the town. There's nothing prohibiting that.
And here, somebody put in that it's required, that he resigns. And I, I remember Mr. Nemeth was.
No.
A park commissioner, and he worked with the town. I didn't understand.
No.
Who put that in there?
Andrea.
I don't understand why that's in there, why, why she would put that in there. It's inaccurate. This is the second or third time there's been inaccuracies put into our memo, and this is, of course, official town business, so I need to speak to her about that.
In addition, Mr. Chairman, I understand that through his vacancy, Ms. Green Deal requires our permission to add the position to the town ballot. She has a limited amount of time to pull this position into the ballot for the Spring Town Meeting and make the papers available for people who want to run for the position. So I think what we need to do tonight is to accept his resignation, and is there a motion that we need to take to?
I, I would like to make an amendment to that motion, that we would accept his resignation as long as he was aware that he is not required to resign.
He's aware of that.
Is he sure?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. Because I communicated that to him.
Make sure he's aware of that.
Do you have a resignation letter from him?
Yes, there's an email. Yeah, town clerk has it.
Well, I think add that amendment, that we will accept his resignation, barring that he, you explain to him that he does not have to resign unless he chooses to do so.
Yep.
All right.
And I believe we also need to move to give our town clerk permission.
Correct.
To post, or to add a position to the ballot for a Parks Committee member.
Should, should he still want to resign?
I would say assuming, but yes, correct. Yes.
No, I mean, just a vote of the board that you've accepted his resignation.
And wish to make the position available for the spring ballot.
And, yeah.
And instruct the town clerk to. Okay. So I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Keast under the conditions that the chairman noted, to allow for the town clerk to make the position available for the Spring Town Meeting, excuse me, the spring ballot and all the relevant effects to it, including.
This is barring Mr. Keast still wants to resign and realizes he doesn't have to. You'll make sure he understands.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And do we, I did not see new business on the agenda, but I have a real free item if we can hold in there for thirty more seconds here, when you're ready for new business.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
So the Zoning Board of Appeals will hear on March thirtieth a request to, we'll hear the designs for seven ninety-nine Washington Street, which is the Gulf Station next to Suparette. The current design appears to put a curb cut onto Washington Street in the middle of the intersections between Exchange and Green and Central Street. I believe we have some communication from McMahon saying that is concerning. You do not want to put driveways in the middle of intersections. And again, the ZBA has their hearing with the owner on March thirtieth. So in conversations with our town planner, the advice is to have this board draft and a request for, rather, issue an advisory opinion to the zoning board, asking that a, they ask of the owner that a traffic engineer look at the designs for seven ninety-nine Washington Street. So that puts the burden on the owner to have a traffic engineer weigh in on, again, the implications of a curb cut and driveway in the space occupied between the Green Street, Exchange Street intersection and the Central Street intersection. We have some preliminary feedback from McMahon that this is an area of concern. And by offering this advisory opinion, the ZBA is then empowered or authorized or encouraged, however you want to say it, to ask this of the owner. So I would like to request that a draft be made for an advisory opinion from this board, asking the ZBA to do that. And I can send you an email, Jeff, with the language.
Are you making, I think you want this as a vote.
I do, yes.
Are you making that motion?
I will now, yes. Unless you have comments or?
No, I think it's well within our rights to do this. It's part of our job.
I move to draft an advisory opinion issued to the Zoning Board of Appeals to request a traffic engineer review the designs for seven ninety-nine Washington, Washington Street prior to the Zoning Board of Appeals hearing on March thirtieth of twenty twenty.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any new business? I do have one thing I would like to bring up, and it may require a motion. It's been a long time since we've had a Governance Committee look at the roles of all the various boards and make suggestions to our board and also at town meeting. Jeff and I are trying to figure out how many years it's been since we've had a review like that. And I think it would be a good idea, and also look into the state laws, as one resident emailed. The state laws are, say, say one thing, and our bylaws say another regarding town administrative duties. And where we're hiring a new town administrator, I think it's important that we clear that up. My understanding is the state laws usurp the town bylaws, but they're not mirroring one another from this email that I got.
Yeah, I think we owe the email.
From a resident. So I think this is a good time to have a Governance Committee, maybe of three people or five, look at the Chapter ninety-four Massachusetts general laws, as well as the town bylaws, and look at all the duties of, of all the boards, what their authority is and what their authority is not type of thing. And I think that would be helpful for, for the community and volunteers and so forth. So I'd like to get the ball rolling on it, if you're in agreement that we should have one.
Would you limit the scope to town bylaws and the special acts of nineteen ninety-four, which I think is the mass general you just referred to? Would you limit the scope to review of those two?
That would be up to the, I mean, I guess it's up to us, but that was my intent, to look at the duties and responsibilities of, of the boards, whether it be an elected board or whether it be an appointed board. Still, it would be nice to have guidance. And there may be some work that needs to be done to have our bylaws coincide with the state laws or vice versa, so. But what I'm told is the state laws usurp the bylaws of the town. So since they're not coinciding exactly with one another, I think it would be good that it, there's a Governance Committee review.
I don't disagree at all in the need. I'm just going to go back to John Petron's presentation and the timeline he provided. He would ask for a document like that, a report like that from a Governance Committee. He would ask that in supporting information gathered at the early start.
I, I think it would have to be voted on to town meeting, to have a Governance Committee, right? Because that'd be new or, or not, could we?
Well, I mean, a committee that's created at town meeting actually has to report back to town meeting what their findings are.
Right. So, you know, that would seem to me to, to be the way to go. And then it's dispersed, right? Transparent, all the rest.
Well, I could put it on a future agenda, I mean, next week's agenda for further discussion.
Further discussion.
You know, if you think about it.
I do. I know, I know what you're talking about. I, I actually spoke to Sam at length. And I, I embrace the idea that the current, the current bylaws do conflict with the special act from ninety-four. They do. It's quite clear they do. That needs to be remedied by the time the new town administrator is brought on board. Sam also harkened back to the Government Study Committee that he was part of in the early nineties that did a lot of things, opened our charter, looked at a lot of content with, across the town. And he and I had expansive discussions about the scope that that could entail. That's big work. That's a lot of work.
Yeah, I wasn't really looking for that, more.
It's, it's needed, but I would think it would make more sense to embark on something like that once the new TA is on board.
Right.
But the former, right, the first piece, I think, is something we can tackle. I don't, I don't, my reaction is I'd prefer that the group report back to us so that we can help navigate the content. If we don't like what we see, or we want some word choices, we can take the effects of what they say and prepare it for town meeting approval in the form of an article this fall.
Okay.
I don't think they'd be ready by the spring, for sure.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. I, I just want to get the ball rolling because.
Yeah, I think if we want to create a subcommittee to review the, the collision of bylaws and, and special act language, that's a, it's a good exercise. It's one that has to happen. It has to happen soon, so I'm, I'm on board with that, Mark.
All right. Do we have a motion, then?
Well, I think we have, I can give you a motion to create it. I think we would have to have Mr. Ritter give us some design of, like, who would be on it, how big it would be.
Yeah, I'd like.
What the charge would be.
I think I just.
You're good with that?
Motion to create it and then.
To create it and let him give us some detail.
Yeah, and then he could put it on the agenda next week, and we can go.
I'll make a motion then to create this.
Governance Committee?
Governance Committee, to review the bylaws and appropriate collision, potential collision they're having with the special act.
And do we have a second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
So we took a vote just now on something that wasn't on our agenda. That's okay, right?
Yeah, because it's under new business.
It's directing Mr. Ritter to prepare something for our next meeting.
Right.
Very good. Very good. Okay.
Anything else?
All right, make a motion to adjourn.